Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. The City Council Regular Meeting, December 5th, 2012, at the City of Satellite Beach. Please join me, Horizon, in a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. And the pledge. Agenda item, we'll move right into them. Number three, Recreation Department Recognition of Computer Instructors Volunteers. Carrie?
If you want to come in, get safe.
(Inaudible)
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 (Inaudible) Mayor Cutino has a proclamation he'd like to read out.
Thank you. You want to hear me? Can I pick up here? Thank you. I'd like to read this. Whereas, in this age of technology, it is important for all ages to learn computer skills and translate that knowledge into aspects of big and large. And whereas, it was determined that there was a shortage of computer courses offered in the beachside area for adults and seniors. And whereas, individuals in our community came forward to meet this demand and develop a computer classroom and curriculum, excuse me, at the David R. Schechter Community Center, and have been volunteering their time and talent to teaching adult computer courses since 2007. And whereas, during just the last two years, over 340 seniors have taken courses ranging from basic, fundamental, to Photoshop. And whereas, those who volunteer continue to encourage our seniors in the community and challenge them to learn new skills. And whereas, such actions promote Satellite Beach as a community for a lifetime. Now, therefore, I will bring Cutino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, of Bard County, Florida, to hereby give special recognition to the individuals who volunteered as computer instructor and coaches with the City of Satellite Beach Recreation Department. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Satellite Beach to be a fixed the 5th day of December, 2012. Thank you very, very much.
So, we're very proud of our computer classes. They offer a variety of classes from fundamentals to all the way up to Computer Fundamental 3. They do Photoshop. They do repair, computer repair, which is pretty cool. And then they'll do some free programs as well for video chatting and Skyping. So if anybody needs a little brush-up on some-- Yahoo! (Inaudible) If anybody needs a little brush-up, they can start again in January.
When's the next Photoshop?
(Inaudible) The next brochures are available, so we're already begun registering. The classes are small. We only put six in a class. So, you want to make sure you register pretty quickly if you're interested in any course. And our green brochure is out and about everywhere, and that list of courses, so if you're interested. And we've had the names of the volunteers, who are some here this evening and some are not. So we have a proclamation for everybody.
Jonathan Moehner.
(Inaudible) Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vincent Graviano.
Thank you.
Rodney Wyser.
Thank you very much.
Mark Overture.
Mark? Real happy Mark's with us. Mark also volunteers with the 55 Club Club on every Monday with Bingo.
Al Rollins.
Mr. Rollins, thank you.
Glenn Noble.
Thank you very much.
And Miguel Vazquez.
Miguel comes to us as a past Air Force Base military. Yahoo! There are several others that could be with us tonight, and thank you very much for all of your help and sorry you had to come so late.
Okay, moving on to number, Agenda Item Number Four. As you probably noticed, there was no sign-up sheet outside. I ask for the sign-up sheet for citizens' comments to please be removed. My feeling is this, if you make it here before the end of this agenda item, you should have the ability to speak. But I'd like a few things, if we could come to agreement on, please, no derogatory remarks towards city employees or council, or really anybody, citizens of the town. Please direct all your inquiries to the Chair. If you're going to be handing out literature, Lenore would like us to have about seven copies, if that's, if you can do that. That way, everybody on council would have them, the city attorney and Lenore would have one for the record. So just to make things easier. I will take citizens and taxpayers of the Satellite Beach first, then I will take the rest, time permitting. Okay? Please direct the Chair, from now on, as long as it goes smooth, there will be no sign-up sheet available. Okay? So anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand. And please state your name and citizen and your address.
I'm Charles Hinton. I'm a citizen of the city. I looked at your item in number 11, and I saw what the previous people were going to comment on, so I'd like to mention something that's important to me that's not on that list. About a month or so ago, I was present when the Budget Director gave some talks about her timetable, and one of the things, in my recollection, she said, if I'm active, she says there is no overtime in the budget for employees. I don't know if that's correct, but if that is correct, then I think that's something that's unrealistic to think that with all the burden you put on people today, that no one would ever work overtime. And by virtue of no overtime in the budget, it means professional staff have to do the work of other employees, and I think that that would be an abusive thing. So one of the first things I'd like very much for you all to do, if you take a look at the budget, and first of all, see if it works toward a goal that is possible for the Budget Director to have a backup, so that if she goes on vacation, that this does not just mean that the whole shop comes to a close. And I think that you need to give some thought to whether or not comp time is appropriate, because a person that works 30 hours in a straight stretch, that needs to be compensated in some way. I think that the issue is that that would be a primary important, and I would like very much for you to take care of that possibility in the budget.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Do you plan to continue the-- (Coughs) Do you plan to continue the town hall meetings?
I don't see why not myself. I think they're good. Communications is the best, and I'm open myself to have them.
Thank you.
Kathleen Arcarol, the 24-year resident. If someone comes to the microphone in the galley, and we have a comment as well, but are we allowed to agree or disagree or compound that?
No, not at the-- You just, you can direct it towards the Chair. Not towards that individual. It's all on--
As far as with the budgets and everything that were reviewed a couple of months ago and stuff like that, the days of overtime are over, I think we all know. I mean, when you sign up for salary exempt, and you get paid a pretty good salary, then that's what you have. Some days you get off on time, some days you don't. I think we don't have an overtime or comp policy, that's probably okay. I mean, it's not uncommon in commercial industry. The reason I'm up here is because I know we're going to touch base on the dog park and the skate park, but I'm not sure to what extent. But one thing we might not cover is that I've noticed lately that the children that are skating don't have their helmets on, or sometimes 50 percent of them. I live a couple of streets away, so I often ride my bike, or walk, or run. And about two weeks ago, I noticed that five out of the 11 kids skating didn't have it. I asked the lady at the dog park if she could call Ms. Carrie, but Ms. Carrie was out of town, but she's emergency backup. So maybe the city can think about who we can, if we have people that are emergency supervisors that are out of town on vacation or on business, who else, you know, steps in? Because I had to call the police department, ask them to go over there nicely without their lights on, and remind the staff person who we're paying to make sure the kids have their helmets on, that they wear their safety gear. Again, we have a skate park and we're manning it, but evidently the rules aren't being followed, and this is why I advocated that it be open with the "skate at your own risk" clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Don?
Don McLendon, 695 town boulevard, resident. Several-- One, someone made a comment that must be an Allman Brothers fan. That's one. They said, "Well, you wore another Allman Brothers shirt last week, or last meeting." I said, "Well, I better start switching them up." But Dwayne Allman did declare 2012 a year of the peach, so it was only a couple of weeks left. As far as the council or the citizen comment period, are you going to have a time limit to speak?
Same. Five minutes.
Two people just got up and spoke to agenda items. Are you going to allow that?
Well, I didn't think it was really towards those agenda, because those items are not on that agenda, really.
Okay. We've been not allowed to speak towards an agenda item in the past, so--
Yeah, but it's not really on the timeline.
I'm not going to speak to a specific agenda item. I want to speak to, well, I want to speak to the organization of the agenda and placement of items. We all realize, and I think that was discussed at the last meeting and meetings prior to that, that more important issues should be pushed forward to the beginning of the meeting and leave perhaps more fluffier issues towards the end. Several reasons for that. We have a packed house, good citizen involvement. I think that would be, we wouldn't be filling a timeline if an important issue came up, as Agenda Item Number 15 is coming up after we set the agenda for the next--
I can address that for you when you're finished.
And the final one is, I really appreciate the volunteers who have dedicated their time to the Computer Learning Skills Direct Center, and I especially liked the, your comment, Mr. Mayor, about technology. And there have been incredible technology changes in our life, certainly, as never before, I think. We would all agree on that. Our meetings now are videoed. More meetings are audiod, some may be videoed. So I think we need to keep that in mind as we move forward on Agenda Item tonight. Thank you.
Going to direct you on that Agenda Items, where they were. In courtesy to Ann, the last meeting, we put the item to the end so that she'd feel more comfortable and she could leave. And so we did the same thing this time when we talked, to give her that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
But I understand what you're saying--
No, no. Thank you.
Yes.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to compliment you for eliminating the sign-in sheet. That is a very good gesture on your behalf. In addition, the last meeting, I complimented you privately, as far as the statement you made regarding the council members all being present for the very important meeting coming up, because they will have opposing positions. Very good move. Thank you for that. What I would like to do tonight, right now, is clarify. I had sent a letter, and I requested what the duties are of the city attorney, whether he represents us as residents of the city, the city as a geographical area, or how exactly that works for the council people. This is going to be, in my opinion, related to some of the Agenda Items this evening. And I think that you may want to get legal input on these.
Did you submit that? Andy, was that submitted to you, or I haven't seen a copy of it, so I really can't address that. Did you submit that already?
No. What I did is, with the ongoing issues that I have--
Uh-huh.
The previous mayor and, well, we're on this topic, if we can get that placed on the agenda on an upcoming meeting. I understand you're busy, you're just coming in. If we could do that sometime in January--
If you would write to the city manager and turn in what you would like to be as a citizen, there's a form to fill out. Do you need to fill out, just go to City Hall, get the form, fill it out, and--
I may have just presented that improperly. The issues that I brought up, I had brought up at a council meeting. The mayor and the council instructed the city manager to investigate. And the way I read the procedure when that happens, that it is automatically placed on the agenda to be discussed.
I think what it does is to get you the information. So what I'll do is, Anne, we'll get that information from you. Okay? And we'll get you the answers to your questions.
Can we have a decision on the legal aspects of tonight's Agenda Meetings?
I don't see why. Point order, I mean--
Yeah, some of the things may be definitely in conflict, as far as the proposals that are up this evening. That's, you know, I'm going to speak on them when they come up. I know it's out of line.
When they come up, then you can address those items.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, he asked the question about whom does the city attorney represent. I think he can go ahead and clarify that.
I am retained by-- The council is a body. My contacts are generally going to be the mayor and the city manager, although I do have communications, obviously, with various members of council at various times, but primarily the communications are between the mayor and the city manager, and maybe other members of staff, such as the police chief or the fire chief, or something like that. But I represent the council as a whole, as a general partner.
Thank you. Any other comment? Here are none. Close the citizens' comments and go to council comments. Councilman Scott?
I have nothing.
Okay. I had a nonexistent record meeting. No, I'm sorry, DOA, Board of Adjustments meeting, you called up. Thank you.
Just wanted to say I attended the Ocean Beach and Reef Festival this weekend, and Carrie, nice job with pulling all that together. I was, had a good attendance. We had overflow parking all the way over to, I think, Enigma is where we were parked. So it was a good turnout for Satellite Beach. And that was the first annual, is that correct? Okay. It was a wonderful event. It was well-attended, a lot of positive feedback, and I'm glad that everyone could turn out to that, including our Satellite Beach Fire Department was there, just providing some coverage and that sort of thing. So, thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. The other thing I'd like to say is that our police department was in the news a lot this week, and I got the note from Ann and all the updates and all that sort of thing, and I just wanted to say, nice job to you guys. Appreciate what you do, and glad to have you as our representatives in the community. So, thank you.
Just want to bring up, in the paper on Sunday, very interesting article on the front page concerning mandates that are probably going to be coming our way on stormwater. So I'd like to make sure that sometime sooner than later, that January, that we have a workshop on stormwater to get us caught up to where we are on it. And I'd like to know, have they put out any schedule on the mandates that they're going to impose on the city, and where we stand on that? I know we're pretty proactive on our stormwater, and I think it'd be a good thing to do that, and also with the grant writers, because this is going to be a very expensive proposition if we don't at least go for some grants, especially if they mandate, because if they mandate, everybody else is going to be going for them too. So if we can get brought up, I'm sure it's important enough to have a workshop on it. Okay? And that's all I have. City Attorney Report?
I volunteer.
Thank you. General City Manager Report? Ann?
Yes.
Thank you.
As Carrie mentioned, here are the new winter and spring activity brochures, and it's also on the website, too, on the recreation page, for your information. I wanted to mention again about the Twilight Santa schedule, that's also posted on the city's homepage, and that runs from December 17th through December 22nd. And also wanted to remind you as well about the Satellite Beach Cares Program through the Fire Department, and they're collecting gift cards from Publix and from Walmart. And you can also donate by writing a check made out to Satellite Beach Reserves. And of course, they're also collecting for Toys for Tots, unwrapped toys, so if you want to drop those by, not too many days, it's hard to believe, it's already the 5th of December. So, please be generous. The Public Works Department has a new administrative assistant, Thomas Albines, and we welcome him to the staff. And with regard, Mayor, to what you were talking about, the TMDLs, which essentially, well, it's a total maximum daily load, and that is actually a calculation of the maximum amount of a pollutant that a water body-- Now, this is a flat-out definition, that a water body can receive and continue to meet water quality standards. Now, with that said, this is what you're really referring to, is a lot of the stormwater runoff, and we, according to Alan, when we had our discussion the other day, the science is really being challenged on all of these things. That's the interesting thing. In other words, the calculations that have been used previously are potentially being modified. So there's a little bit of a hold on this, because there is a meeting, December 12th, in Palatka at that level, and then Tallahassee, subsequent to that, is also going to have a meeting to determine exactly what the calculations are and how they may have changed. So there's a little bit of a holding pattern on some of this, when they talk about the mandates, but the science is actually being challenged on this, and how to deal with the different criteria. So that's where we are on that. And last but not least, is the new Bright House installation that we are going through in the city, and that will save us about $30,000. We renegotiated a contract, moving away from another entity and moving to Bright House. I believe Police Department, you have your new phones, and we're working towards the Internet network. So we are going to save $30,000, which is, to me, a huge issue in that renegotiation of the contract.
Do you have any information on the TMDL grant award?
Well, that's another interesting situation, because as far as Alan said, this is really almost, Dave Worley said, it's basically been polled right now, they are not moving with anything that's that serious, and talking about the recalculations. So Alan is in regular contact with Tallahassee on this, and everything is in a holding pattern until they define all the different variables and the criteria that are, that they-- I mean, they're basically almost indicating that maybe they haven't been doing it the way it should be done with the new information they're looking at. Seriously being challenged.
Has it become stricter or less strict?
Well, we may, from what I understand, again, this is only tentative, we may actually be in pretty good shape here in Satellite Beach. But we have to wait until they go through the motions of the meeting in Palatka, and then the subsequent meeting in Tallahassee. So that's where we are, and then definitely will keep you updated on that as that, you know, is hot off the press.
The 12th is the meeting in Palatka?
That is correct.
And then when is the meeting in Tallahassee?
That has, I don't know. That has not been set yet.
Does Alan go into the one on the 12th in Palatka?
I will check with him. He did not indicate that he was.
It's my understanding that the last TMDL grant that Plain English submitted has been awarded. That would be $372,000, I believe, in grant funds. It was written specifically for the Cassia Phase III project, which has been completed, and it's my understanding that the agency is willing to roll that money over to the Laura Lane project. That's the information that I've received.
From Alan, that I thought that was going to occur, but he told me today it wasn't. So that's what I'm saying. This is a very tenuous situation, so I will definitely keep you updated. And if you'd like to speak directly with Alan, please feel free to do so.
I still think that we need to do the workshop. I mean, we need to really get on track, and hopefully by January we'll have-- I think once we get the information out of that Palatka--
Right. I think that's the first step then. And that's all I have.
Any further comments, Ann, from the council?
What happened to the city manager's executive summary, the narrative report that was--
That's going to, as the mayor and I discussed, we're going to pick that up on the 19th. It was a very quick turnaround from last Wednesday to this. We had a day to get the agenda out, so we went ahead and did it this way, and we will update that for the 19th.
Lauren, she asked me, I was in there, and she had one day to do it. I said, you know, we'll start on the 19th.
Correct.
Any further comments? Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Eight, Council, 2012. One, two, three, four, we have five items. I'll start with A, election of Vice Mayor, and at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations. Nominate Councilwoman Deenan. Okay?
I nominate Councilwoman Breimer.
Okay. Here are any other nominations? Okay, I'll close the nominations. We have two on the floor. We have Councilwoman Deenan and Councilwoman Breimer. Okay, we will vote on this. Lenore? Council-- There's no seconds on for comment. Councilwoman Deenan for--
Probably need just to poll the council and let each person say who they're voting for.
Is that needed? All right. Is that good with council? Okay. Lenore, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hold on half a second here. Councilmember Billman?
Councilwoman Deenan.
Councilwoman Deenan?
Councilwoman Breimer.
Councilmember Breimer?
Councilwoman Breimer.
Mayor Cutino?
Councilwoman Breimer. Thank you. Moving on to B, Agenda Item Eight, Appoint a Voting Delegate and Alternate Delegate to the Space Coast League of Cities.
Mr. Mayor, are you interested in being the delegate?
Yeah.
Primary delegate?
Okay. I will. Normally, it has been here, it looks like, in passes, it's the mayor and the city manager, or it could be council, however you would like. I think it's typically been mayor and city, and city manager.
Yes.
And is that all right with you?
Yes. Okay, so just-- Are consensuses--
Consensus is fine.
Yes, it's fine.
Consensus, thank you. Okay? Okay. On to C, Appoint Council Board Liaisons and Board Committee Representatives. Okay. One thing, if you've been on a board, maybe it would be an idea to switch around to learn a little more, so we wouldn't stay on the same board year after year, if you like that. So since Councilwoman Deenan's not here, we'll place her in possibly a different board than she's on now, so she gets different experience around. Just ideas? Although I would submit, on her behalf-- Yes. --that she is very experienced, and this is her profession. So-- Okay. Great. Who go board by board, and whoever would like that board, put their names at. Okay with council? Sear? Mutification Board? First, it's a nine o'clock meeting. There's no way I could live different than you, neither. I can, I'll put my name in there, I can get off some time. We have Board of Adjustments, first Monday, 7:00 P.M. Mr. Billman does it now?
I'll keep it, but--
No, that's fine. Let me go.
I'll keep it.
No, that's fine. Okay. Okay. Okay, Code Enforcement?
I can take that one if you'd like.
Okay. Comprehensive Plan and Advisory Board?
I'm interested in that one.
Okay. We have Mrs. God interested, and Mrs. Dean is not here. She's been on it. How would you like to handle it? By vote or...
That's fine.
Or just consensus?
Consensus, I would guess.
Again, you know, she's not here, I mean, I understand. She's not here to defend herself.
Well, if we're going to rotate boards, then...
Right, I, okay. That's why, I think we've always rotated boards in the past, and so people could get experience on it. So I'll say Mrs. God on that one.
I just would point out, she's been on it less than a year.
She's had to be on it for a year, right?
Right. And she started in December.
Right, now, yeah.
So the first meeting, okay.
Just for a year.
Okay.
Library Board? It's, I'll put down on it. I think Joe had it before. I'll take it.
I'm sorry, who will take that?
Mayor Cuttino. Who's taking library?
I'll do it. Joe did it. I'll just put it in there. P&amp;Z, Plan and Zoning Board, third Monday, 7:00 P.M.
Why don't we put Deenan on that one?
Recreation Board, Mr. Billman, you've been on it. Anybody else want to be on it?
If he's fine with it, that'll work.
Fine, okay. Retirement Board, fourth Thursday, quarterly, 2:00 P.M. It's an afternoon, so...
I can take that.
Can you do that one?
I can take that.
Sampson Island Park?
It's behalf of you.
Okay. Councilwoman Breimer. Southeast Coalition, it's a Thursday prior to the second Wednesday. It's 4:30 in the afternoon.
I should probably take that since I have, I can get away during the day.
Okay. Is that okay? No, I can't. You can get away.
You can't get away.
No. Okay. That's it. Let's move on to appoint CRA Board Chairman and Vice Chairman. Article five officer. I'm going to let City Attorney, we have a conflict in our code here, so Jim, will you please handle that?
Sure. I was asked to look at this issue as a result of the conversation at the last meeting about the mayor potentially canceling the upcoming CRA meeting for December in his capacity as the Chair of the CRA. Because I haven't really been involved in the CRA process, I was unaware of the, actually, I guess they're bylaws, not policies and procedures, but I was unaware of the fact that there is a provision in there that the Chair and Vice Chair of the CRA are to be appointed by a majority vote of the City Council and shall serve in their respective role to the discretion of the City Council. The issue is, is that under Florida statutes, it provides, in all, the governing body of the municipality shall designate a Chair and Vice Chair from among the commissioners, but there's nothing in there about how we designate, you know, what the requirements of quote-unquote designating are. The city currently has a code provision that's been in effect since the CRA Board was created, that's my recollection, that basically says that by virtue of their office, the mayor and the vice mayor will be the Chair and the Vice Chair of the CRA Board. So there's really no appointment process per se, other than the appointment of the vice mayor. And so that's the one issue, is we have a code provision that provides for the designation. The other issue is, is, I mean, for lack of a better way of putting it, it's kind of like the tail wagging the dog, where the CRA is adopting a policy, essentially telling council how to do their job, as far as the statute saying, you know, that the City Council will designate. But based on the fact that the ordinance is in place and has been in place, and there is no contrary provision in the statute about how you designate or establishing how you designate, there doesn't appear to be a reason why the city's code provision wouldn't apply. And therefore, the mayor automatically becomes the Chair of the CRA Board by virtue of the code. And then when the City Council appoints the vice mayor, the vice mayor will become the vice chair.
It looks like we need to get it straight, how we are going to do it, if it wants to be other than the ordinance we have, so...
I understand what Jim's saying, but it strikes me, it just strikes me weird. I mean, here we are, telling the CRA Board, as City Council now, we're telling the CRA Board how to, you know, how to set that. In my estimation, if the council does this, what we're doing is we're negating the authority of the CRA Board to appoint the Chairman and the Vice Chairman. And in our particular case, what we're doing is we're taking the voice away from two at-large citizens who are part of that Board.
No, that's what I'm saying. The statute says that the City Council names the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying, starting off, by saying, I hear what you're saying. I'm telling you, that's my stance, that we're kind of negating the authority of the CRA Board to appoint their own. But what you're saying is the CRA, by statute, can't appoint their own?
Correct, correct. The stat, that's what I'm saying. That's why it specifically designated that provision in that email I sent. It says, "The governing body of the municipality shall designate a Chair and Vice Chair from among the commissioner."
Well, that kind of flies in the face of, I know, I'm not doubting you, I'm just telling you, it kind of flies in the face of the whole thing that the Attorney General's been saying with regard to CRAs and special districts and the governing bodies, and if you want to keep the two as separate as possible so you don't have conflict of interest issues.
That's what the statute says, though.
That's right. I hear you. I hear you, Counselor. My question is...
I mean, if you want, I mean, I don't, you know, it's kind of cumulative, but I don't see a problem. If council wants to, quote, you know, designate it by motion, that's fine, but it can't be inconsistent with what's in the, what's in the code.
I asked Jim to look into it because when it found out there was a conflict, I wanted to make sure it was all above board, and we got a ruling from the Attorney on it, so...
And actually, just as a follow-up, not to bring up bad memories, but the, that was one of the issues that came up in the Daytona Beach AG's report, was that there was no designation of the Chair and Vice Chair by the governing body of Daytona Beach. And that precipitated me looking at that issue before, you know, as far as the designation aspect of it. And like I said, there's nothing in the statute that sets forth how you designate, so, you know, so that's...
Want to make the change or something, we can bring it up at a later council meeting and make the correction when needed. Great. Okay. The only other thing I would say was this would be a great place to have that town hall meeting designation, since we're talking 2012 City Council, that's it. But we can't do that, we have to do that the next one. And I'd like to see Cheryl here, so, yeah, everybody can be here and pick ones that be part of it. Schedule a recorder or something like we had in the back this month. Okay. So can we get that, can we get that put on the next meeting? Sure, no problem. I'll open up Agenda Item number eight, if there's anybody to comment, citizens comment on it. Karen?
Ron Jagudis, resident of Satellite Beach. Did I hear clearly that you're going to wait on deciding on the CRA? No, you're going to proceed to vote?
It's a fair, complete, it's not a vote. It's not a vote. The ordinance of the city says who it'll be. And if CRA, we need to change that, we need to do it at another council meeting. But for right now, that's the way the law, that's why I had him, because there is a conflict.
I understand that, and I understand also, in attending the CRA meetings, there was supposed to be, supposedly, some housecleaning the City Council was to attend to prior to the current council. I didn't go back and research it any further, but if somebody would contact the consultant staff, I think they could explain this a little further. It is what it is right now, but I'm disappointed it is this way. I don't think this was the intent of the Board to leave it, had housekeeping been completed. Thank you.
I'm a little confused with the interpretation, because I'm not a legal kind of person, whatever, and, but I do have kind of a bad vibe about it, and maybe we should give Mr. Beadle a little more time to just kind of cross-reference with some other lawyers about it, or just really make sure that we know exactly what's going on. Because I hear him read it, but I don't send so much conviction, so I just was wondering, it wouldn't hurt us to maybe just, you know, we had so many, so many issues with the CRA, and to put council and, you know, and the people on the Board and who's in charge of it and everything, we've got to be really, really, really careful.
Thank you. Please, when you come to the podium, identify yourself. We know you, but just, please, thank you. Any other comment? Here are none. We'll move on to Agenda Item number nine, update on special event volunteer coordinator, Carrie.
I'm running as, um, Philton from Rockland. Jack Lee, we're the special events coordinator. I'm often running as of October 3rd, February. First thing we did was establish our goals, some strategies, and some accomplishments, and then what Jackie called observations of what she discovered since starting this process. She's leading her 14 hours a week between special events and volunteer coordinating. Made some pretty interesting headways so far. Have a volunteer program, Jack Lee makes a new expanded program, and have three new special events on the dock at four on 2013. Can I tell them about 2013?
Yeah, we've learned that people really like to, those that want to volunteer, want to do it, want to sign up for it easily. And we've already addressed the wonders of technology. So with the help of our IT person, Adam Schultz, he and I went through and we found a free, so that's good, online signup program where people can access it. They log in, they, we put down, for example, we put down a Santa party as an event, and we list what volunteers are needed, what times they're needed, what their job is, et cetera. People can plug right in. We can say we need four people to empty trashcans. And those people can sign right up. They know exactly what their task is, where to go, when to be there, and who to contact. And from that, it creates a database for us that we can also use for future events and contacting them and reminding them. It's a really nice program. We found it, Surfside Elementary has been using it successfully for a couple of years.
Jackie, is this on the Rec Center homepage?
Currently, right now, we're using it in-house. We want to make sure it works before we send it out.
But eventually...
If it doesn't work.
Eventually, you're going to hang it on the, if it works, you're going to hang it on the...
Absolutely, yeah. It'll be on the city website. It'll be on the Rec page.
We did find that there's a gap between those who want to volunteer and opportunities to volunteer, that that's one of the ways with this program, we're going to try to straighten that out. And Jack Lee's met with all city staff, quite a few businesses and department staff, schools, and then has visited several special event areas. So the report kind of gave you simple lines for each idea of where she headed. And if you guys are excited about it, what we hope is to just keep watching the city brochure for all the new upcoming special events.
Thank you. Council and... Thank you very much. Thank you. Citizens, comments?
Dale Abrams, citizen. I did go to this website, and it is pretty cool. I checked it out, and it's really cool, yeah.
Thank you.
Did you just see that now, back there?
I think Don yet, yeah.
Don McLendon, citizen. First, I would want to express my disappointment that I was not here for the event this past weekend. We were out of town, and I have read blogs and newspaper articles that, about the event and how successful it was, and want to congratulate you guys for bringing that forward. I would also like to thank this council and the past council makeup continuing to move forward with the special events project that was implemented. And I think it looks good, and it's definitely something I think can bring something else to Satellite Beach. Yes, we have great parks and all, but recognition is something that these sort of events bring to the table. So stating we were out of town, we were in Bradytown, Florida, at a special event, first annual Braves and Blues Festival. And it was a blowout for them. Attendants were three times projected, they projected 1,000, they had over 3,000 attendees, paid attendees. It gives the city great recognition. And with events like that, if we maybe focus a little bit out of the box sometimes at the resources that we have, our physical resources, in addition to human resources, as some people refer to as software, but there are great opportunities for us to gain that exposure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Carrie, I heard some really good things on the ocean, and a longtime resident, husband and wife, who I saw afterward, said, "Boy, it really added a sense of community." And one of the comments was, "The music was neat. We went up there, we sat, and we listened to the music. It was great." And they said, "Unfortunately, we don't have it here. Every Friday night, we go over to Vieira, the mall out there," since I'm not a mall person, I named the mall out in Vieira, and they have music. And they have bands playing and music, and people kind of gather. So that was something a citizen brought that you might check into. We have a nice beach in some areas, but it seemed to really, people liked it. And may I say, as a member of the past council who started this, this is exactly what we were looking for. So thank you for that.
One more thing. That Ocean Beach Festival was spearheaded specifically by Surf Riders Foundation and Live Blue, some folks in town, Rodney Smith, and a few others, and Recreation Department, the Fish Department, Public Forests Department. Everybody joined in to make that a successful event. But kudos to Surf Riders and Live Blue, because they did a lot, a lot of work on that, and the city supported it. It's very kind of unique and unique myself, that is possible, very, very combination of people.
Seemed to really be, you know, well, well, I'd love to see more stuff.
And I just wanted to say, too, this was a long discussion that we had had a few months ago on how to put this together, and Jeff was instrumental in, shall I say, donating, and that's what I'm talking about, teamwork, 14 hours, so that we could do this without any additional cost to the city. And I think that's extremely important. So I think this is going to be, you know, we're going to have great success with this and have these kind of community events, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10, reducing side yard setbacks, Jim? I'll read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 1064, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 30-525B, Satellite Beach City Code, reducing side yard setback requirement for docks, providing separability, providing effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance number 1064.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. To I'm for you is ordinance 1064, reducing the side yard setbacks for docks. A little background on this, staff is tasked to take a look at non-comformities in general and more specifically docks. nonconformities in general and more specifically docks. When we looked at the docks, basically what I did is I started from the very north end of the city.
Is that mic on or something?
What I did is I started at the very north end of the city and looked at every property in Satellite Beach on the property praiser site and came up with about 229 docks out there. And trying to get a feel for the amount of nonconformities, what I did is use the principal structure, knowing that the side yard setback for the house is used between seven and a half and 10, I used that as a reference point, and generally speaking, 10 feet. And understanding that the dock setbacks are 20 feet, looking at docks that were closer to the side yard than the principal structure, you could clearly say that it was nonconforming. And that was the baseline for the 80-some-odd docks that I found to be nonconforming. Truth is, that number is probably considerably higher because it really doesn't take into account those docks that are less than 20 feet, you know, that are actually in front of the house, but they're greater than 10 feet. But as, you know, generally speaking, about 36% of the docks out there in Satellite Beach are nonconforming. When you have that many nonconforming structures of one type, you've got to really question whether or not this is suitable for a variance or if really you've got a problem with your code. And so what I did is I gathered up as much information as I could and then sent it over to the planning zoning board, let them take a look at it. One suggestion that was made was to ask planning zoning board if they were interested in doing like a blanket forgiveness, just across the board, any dock that's there is fine. And then going forward, you maintain your current setbacks and you've got to maintain that 20-foot setback. They really didn't have a lot of interest in doing something like that. It brought up a lot of different concerns. So they did suggest that I bring this thing back with some additional information. So I did some more research. I polled all the other cities within Brevard County. I think I've included that in there to kind of give you an idea of what's been working elsewhere. And it's actually quite revealing and helpful in our process. So what ultimately where we lived with it is that a setback reduction was definitely in order from 20 feet to something less than that. And through a lot of public comment, two of them specifically had suggested reducing it down to whatever the principal structure was of that zoning district. Looking at it a little bit closer, realized that all the docks are in the R1 district and they're all 10 feet. So let's make it simple. The recommendation was to reduce that 20-foot side yard setback to 10 feet. What's really caused a lot of that, not all of it, but a lot of those nonconformities was the dock ordinance didn't really come about until 1981. We had a considerable amount of docks that were already built prior to 1981. What I found is that most people, and myself, I used to own the water, and I, when I walked to the front door, I wanted to be able to see the water. I didn't want my dock, my structure obstructing my view. So if I had an option, I would have pushed that dock all the way over to one side of my property. And that's what I found when I went to Brevard County and I started looking at these old aerials around 1980 and prior, is that almost all of them, the docks were pushed all the way to the side property. And then later, 1981 comes about and ordinance comes into effect, and now all of a sudden, we get all these nonconformities out there. So that's where a lot of this came from. And so before you is that ordinance, and available for any questions on this.
Thank you, Counsel.
I'm, I support what PNC is recommending. I am a little bit confused as to how we wound up with the wording that we are looking at. I'm looking at the memo from you, the PNC Board dated October 11, and in that, you state that the current 30-525D says every portion of the structure shall be set back at least 20 feet from the extended side yard property line. And their proposed language is every portion of the dock structure shall be set back from the extended side yard property line, at least the distance required of the principal structure's side yard setback within the zoning district the dock is located. And the language that we are being given to amend the code is every portion of any structure shall be set back at least 10 feet from the extended side yard property line. And I guess that I'm confused about the language about the principal structure.
I can explain that. This first one, you see, there's another memo there from September, which is the month prior. That's when it originally went to PZAB and again, I was asked to come back with some additional information after we kind of fine-tuned it a little bit. So what you're seeing there is that, this is my memo to planning zoning where I stated the current ordinance, and then I provided a starting point of some proposed language. So that really wasn't from the planning zoning board. They took that proposed language that I had suggested, and they tweaked it. And then that's when they refined it to where it was just simply 10 foot. And ultimately, that's what ended up in the ordinance.
And so what they finally tweaked is this language that we're proposing here?
That's correct.
Okay. And I question changing, I know that this sounds like picking nits, but in the law, lawyers make their money off of nits.
Sure.
And it says every, every portion of the, I say that as an attorney, by the way, every portion of the structure is the way it used to be, and now it's any portion of, every portion of any structure. And I find that kind of a loose term. I know that it's under the heading Division 4 docks, piers, boat ramps, et cetera. But I'm confused as to why we would change the to any.
My recollection from when I talked to John about this, it's just because it talks about docks, boat lifts, boat ramps, piers, mooring piles, and that kind of stuff. And basically, it's any structure has to be, you're talking about the structure. I mean, the issue to me when I was reading it was what is the structure? So it should be any structure so that basically any of these items up here.
Okay. Then I think that needs to be clarified because any structure can mean anything. So I would suggest that the language, the language be changed to every, give me a second here, every portion of the, every portion of any structure addressed in this division.
Or say that section.
Where are you?
Applicability.
Oh, okay. Okay. Give me a second then. For those who remember when I was on council before, isn't this like old time? Okay, so it should be every portion of any structure set forth in section 30-524 shall be set back at least 10 feet from the extended side yard property line. And I will move that we approve this amended language on first reading.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Dillon, on the change of the language.
And the reading of the first. And the first reading of the ordinance.
Enough for comment from citizens? Don?
Turn my timer on this one. Don McLendon, resident, Satellite Beach. What was failed to be mentioned here tonight was that this whole process started with an individual or a residence of the city complaining that their view was obstructed from one end of the canal to the Grand Canal, further east of the canal, all the way to the Grand Canal by a neighbor's boat. That's where it started. From that point, it progressed to another neighbor complaining about his boat. It's occupied, I would conservatively guess, 500 or more hours, this gentleman's time, I don't know how many hours, the interim city manager's time, hours of the city attorney's time. And it's all because there's one individual who has been found in noncompliance by the code enforcement, appealed to the Board of Adjustment, was denied really, and so remains noncompliant. So now, we go from that to spending hundreds of hours, attorney fees that I have no idea, including land surveys of people's property in the city. I think, I'm a property owner. I bought my property in 1991. The code at the time I built my dock was 20 foot. My dock is exactly 20 foot from my adjacent property line on the side my dock is on. I like that 20 foot. I've got a 23-foot boat. But I want to buy it, let's just imagine, I like having my dock, part of my dock where I can sit on it, enjoy the water. So my boat ingress is from east to west. If my neighbor was, if we were both forced to move our docks in 10 foot, I couldn't get my boat out of the dock, or it'd be difficult. I'd have a navigation problem. Oh, I'm sure I could handle it, but it's not necessary. I think this is wrong. I think it's, it's just, I know it's not going to go away. It hasn't went away. Despite numerous, well, again, I'm still saying hundreds, I bet there's 1,000 hours or more involved in it. It's ludicrous. And it boiled down, in my opinion, to three things. It's location, location, location. If you want an uninstructed view, pay the price, pay for the property, pay the taxes. That's fairly simple. That's what, you get what you pay for. And to top this off, the fine was, I'd go for 15 foot. I think a compromise would be, it's helpful, at least if you get a 30-foot boat out if you had one.
Thank you.
Dominic Montzner, resident. I don't live on the water. I don't have a boat. But basically, what we're doing is, we're telling people they can build more structure over the water. And that's the reality of it. You're now telling people that you can extend docks out to 10 feet from the property line. So if I've got a dock and I've got a structure, I can build my structure bigger. And everything that we talk about, about runoff and about degradation of the waterways, when you build structure over water, you degrade the waterway. And that's what we're proposing here, is more structure over the water. And I don't think that's what the intent of what we're trying to do is. We're trying to solve a problem, but now we're telling the other 200-and-some-odd people that own property on the water, they can build more structure over the water. And I don't think that's right.
Thank you.
Catherine Argoro, Satellite Beach resident. I agree. And as a degreed environmentalist, I can tell you that I have found out that nobody in the city that's employed, we don't have an environmental person, and we don't have a safety person. And perhaps you should have somebody in environmental capacity, or something, look at this, because it does affect the shore area line, the water, the vegetation, what manatees feed on, everything. It's all encompassing, but it doesn't look like anybody's looked into any of the environmental issues beyond just the structure issues. Thank you.
Ranjagudis, resident. And here come the unintended consequences. Those are just a few mentioned. Ingress, egress, getting in and out, if there's a bigger boat, makes it challenging for the neighbor, or vice versa. I'm not sure this is the correct ordinance to follow right now. It probably needs a little more work, unfortunately. For instance, I pulled Fort Lauderdale's code out for the waterways. And they have different interpretation for canals and different interpretations at the end where you're on a main canal. One thing that struck me interesting was the length of the boat anchored adjacent to such property, water crafts extending beyond such side setback lines as extended into the waterways will not impede ingress and ingress, egress for adjacent properties. So we're going to the 10-foot line. I don't know where that stands. I am a boater, and I understand these kind of issues. And perhaps it needs more, more review here. And then when I hear the setback to 10 feet, what about the seven and a half feet for some of the lots? I heard mentioned that perhaps there's seven and a half feet in between houses. Those people will be forced into a variance situation. They're going to have to shell out the money to meet the seven and a half feet, even though the homes are existing there. Thank you.
Any other comments, citizens? Here are none. I'll close that portion. John, does this change the size of the structure that's allowed, or just the location of?
Potentially, it could change the size as well.
Okay. I know we talked today on the phone because I know what Don's talking about. And I had, that was my question to you, that if you take 10 feet, you come back 10 foot, and you have two openings facing each other, and you have a 25-foot boat, which a lot of people have center consult boats and park them in the canal. When you back that boat out, you hope the other guy's not there, because you're not going to be able to leave the space quite as easy if they're both facing each other. You'd have to make it so they have to face a way to a larger portion of the property. But it's uncertain. My concern is still the same as when I talked to you today, that 10-foot, you have a 23-foot boat, which is a pretty average-sized boat, you're going to back into the other guy. I mean, if that's how your boats.
Yeah, a couple of things to consider is, one, it gives the homeowner a greater degree of flexibility to shift that dock to one side or the other, which actually gives him a greater approach to his, to his, we're talking cradle detective, you know, the Ushay.
Only if, I mean, only if the other dock is not placed there. So one person would have to make his dock be on another portion, the opposite side.
Sure.
Because you don't have the distance you need between them. It's going to be uncertain. Or you have to make the opening to the larger portion of the lot.
Right.
Therefore, you don't encroach on your neighbor's property.
And also, one other thing to think about is, the dock ordinance is independent of the boat setback ordinance. Other words, boats are required, they only have a five-foot setback requirement. So they can actually go within five feet of the property on both sides. So I mean, you can have a very large boat, whether you have a dock or don't have a dock. It's independent of that.
But the problem is still exacerbated if it's 10-foot setback as opposed to a 20-foot?
Yeah, the scenario that the mayor has mentioned, while I can't think of a case where that is happening, or would happen, it certainly is a possibility that two people, or let's say one has already moved their dock fairly close to the buddy neighbor, and it's facing, facing that neighbor. If a, the next-door neighbor, the buddy neighbor, was to build a dock or modify their dock, bring it closer, they would create a hazard, well, call it a hazard or an obstruction. I'm just not sure if I understand why that individual would spend their money to modify their dock to create a bigger problem for themselves when they have the option of extending it the other way, to give them a greater approach.
What I see is it happened in 1981. What I see is it happened in 1981, we created this new ordinance, therefore, we as a city created an awful lot of nonconformity. And unfortunately, they're not all cement pilings, and pilings go. Over the length of time, from 1981 to now, I'm sure some of the pilings need to be replaced. Well, you told me today, as soon as they pull that piling, they have to meet the 19, they have to meet today's code, they can't replace what they have. So we really caused the nonconformity unfortunately, and then they would have to come here for variance, correct?
That is correct. Currently, we have to, let's say there's a nonconforming structure that's sitting at 15 feet from the property line, five feet of it's nonconforming. We have to allow them the ability to maintain that structure in a safe manner, replace the gaps and the stringers and such. If they were to remove the pilings, remove that structure, they would not have the ability to put that back without going for a variance.
Could you add one and not remove one? I'm just saying, you add the pilings and not remove.
Well, the intent of a nonconformity is to not allow its continued existence.
That's what I wanted you to go and say. Okay, thank you.
One of the issues that came up, when John was looking into this issue, was that, what is it that city council wants staff to do with respect to the discovery of docks that have been modified, which the staff is able to do based on aerials, and they didn't get a permit obviously for it? And so does the city go after potentially 80 people for code violations for modifying a dock? And that was part of the genesis for this suggestion. You know, whether council wants to adjust what's being proposed to address some of the concerns that have been raised. For instance, that if somebody's 10 feet away, the other one has to construct the dock so that if they want to have the U that they would go from the other side, I don't, you know, I'm just suggesting that as another alternative. But part of the problem, or part of, one of the issues that got brought forward during this whole process is, is this, this council wants us to go after code enforcement violations for these people that we now know are violating the code. And is that something that council wants the city to be expending resources on?
I think we have an issue now.
Correct. Correct. And that was part of the reason why this was looked at.
At some point, these 81 or more are going to be in violation when they have to do any work on their dock. Other than pilings.
Well, not in violation.
They're not to be conforming, they're not going to be able to do it, they got to come here for a variance, correct?
No. The problem is, is we know that they have made modifications to docks without coming in and getting a permit. That's what the issue is, is that we know that violations have occurred because of that. And basically, by adopting this ordinance, you eliminate that enforcement issue, quote unquote.
Of the existing docks that are conforming right now, you know how many, if they had to do piling replacements, are going to be nonconforming?
Well, I can tell you, there's 229 docks, 81 of those do not meet today's code, and a large percentage of those have been modified without permits at some point in the last, since the 80s. And they occasionally pop up, every once in a while, we might actually catch one, but a lot of them happen to be, we stumble across it, or a neighbor complains about a neighbor, and then here we are.
So are we saying that this ordinance is going to forgive folks who built without a permit?
It could forgive them, it basically forgive, if you want to call it forgive, it legitimizes all of those docks that are outside of 10 feet of the property line, without any...
To include those who built without a permit?
Yes, they would be, if we could catch them and had some verifiable evidence that they modified their dock without a permit, we certainly could still pursue them for not obtaining a permit.
But what do we do about the homeowners who bought with that dock existing after the modification had been made unbeknownst to them?
That's exactly one of the challenges that I mentioned, there are so many different variables as to, you know, we bought it like that, and, or we don't have any legitimate proof.
You want lawsuits, that's going to be a lawsuit.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, that's why we just felt it was easier just to look at this and just cut the number down as low as we could cut it, and go from 81 plus down to approximately 18.
Would it be possible, if we want to control the size of the structure, would it be possible to modify the code and say 10 feet one side or the other, but not both? In other words, that would keep it from being 10 feet, you know, this way. If it was this, it could be, you know, 10 feet from here, or 10 feet from there, but the structure remained the same size, you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, or I think as Don had mentioned, about 15 feet, and that kind of same, same thing, you leave a one, and one at 20, and one at 10, so you're kind of at a 15.
You can't have both at 10.
Right.
Because that would elongate your structure.
Right, and there used to be in code years ago, it was a percentage of your waterfront. I don't remember what that percentage was, but...
I don't get the sense that we're solving what we need to be solving with this ordinance. And I also discern that there are multiple issues involved here, and we're trying to stuff them all in one basket, and slam the lid down, and hopefully they'll go away. I think that this ordinance is, at best, premature, and I think it would behoove us to, for the council, for somebody to develop a paper for the council, I'd be very willing to help draft this thing, delineating what are the issues, and what are the possible solutions, and what are the possible ramifications, both pro and con, for the property owners, and what are the legal ramifications, so that we can get a picture, a big picture of all of the issues involved, and not take this approach to try to solve a bunch of kind of unrelated issues.
Maybe back to planning and zoning, the United Board would do exactly that. Yeah, I think we need to post.
Or yeah, or even, I would like to see staff come up with this paper that I'm talking about, and then send that to the planning and zoning board, and get their input on it. But I don't think it's within their capability to come up with this paper, because, you know, it's staff who knows the issues, not these boards. So that's what my proposal would be.
We have a motion on the floor, maker of the motion would like to withdraw it in a second, and then we'll postpone it and send it back.
I withdraw my motion.
I draw my motion. And we'd like to postpone it to a later time. Well, we want to send it to staff.
As far as I'm concerned, you can kill this one. I don't think it addresses what we need to be addressing. I think we need to start all over again.
Well, I guess my question is, are you willing to work with them on this?
Sure.
Because I think that's going to be key.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'll work with you. Again.
Exactly. So is the council, great? Yeah, that's, no, good, good. Okay. Don, thank you, sorry. Back at it, appreciate it. The next item, I'm sure, is not going to be short. So wishes to council, here will take a 10 minute recess. Okay, come back, 8:30. All right.
Sorry, I'm about creating a monster. Man, I wish I had a word coming today.
I was sweating. I will, I will. Call back to order. Council meeting, moving on to agenda item number 11. Before we get into, I know this will be a lot of discussion on this, I would appreciate it if we do it in an orderly fashion, and we get through this. Council's policies and procedures are very important, and your input is greatly appreciated. And we were going to come up with a procedure right now, and how we're going to go through this information, and where we're going to have council comments. Okay? Councilwoman Gott asked for this to be on this agenda item, so I am going to refer to Councilwoman Gott on suggestions of how to proceed.
Well, I would propose, first of all, that we open it up for citizen comments on the whole document, no, now, rather than, you know, and maybe you want to do it at the end also, but rather than trying to have citizen comments multiple times throughout the document, I think it'd be easier to have it now.
I would like to, I would feel better if we did it twice, because I'm not sure if this full copy or enough of them were out there, where people know everything that is on here. So if it's okay with council, open it up for their opinion to start, we'll go through the document, and then we'll bring it back for citizens' comments, if that suits council and everybody in the audience.
And then for the rest of the procedure, I would like to make some introductory comments right now to explain what I did. I took the current policies and procedures, and I never met a document I didn't like to edit, and put in plain English, following the KISS principle. So where I found duplications and that sort of thing in the original, I took all the duplications, put them in one place, and expressed it in plain English. And most of what I have presented here is an iteration of what is currently in the policies and procedures. Where I have added something, I did underline, so that you can see where this is new material. I started out trying to do the legislative format of underlining and strike throughs, and the document just got so confusing, you couldn't follow it. And so that's why I decided to just go with a clean copy, and so where you see clean text, even though I may have rephrased it to make it read more simply or more clearly, it is the same policy that currently exists. I believe there was one instance where, one or two instances where I was changing something, and when that happened, I did put a strike through in here, so that you could see what I was changing, and then added my proposed language. So, but otherwise, it is either what's in here now, what's in the policies and procedures now, or it's new material that I have proposed to be added. And the process that I would suggest is that we go to section by section, letter by letter, and some of these things are so straightforward, that I would think they wouldn't require any kind of discussion. And so to try to move through these that way, such as section one, letter A, and then, you know, make your comments and so forth, and go through it that way.
Thank you. That's okay. All right. Is Lorraine, is that your introduction?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to open it up to the floor right now for citizens' comments. I will bring it back for citizens' comments at the end also. So open if anybody has a citizen's comment to start.
Kathy Nargorl, Assemblywoman, President. Well, I don't know what we're talking about, because I haven't seen the stuff, but I just want to make sure that you guys aren't going to vote on anything in the middle, and then I'll just roll my comments to the end.
We are, like I said, we're going to open it up now for comments, for those who have read it, and want to put some input before we start. Then I will open it back up at the end before we vote for, well, and actually, I don't believe we're voting tonight.
Yes, we are voting tonight. It was presented last week, we'll be voting tonight.
Want to make sure that Jim, is that the procedure, Jim?
That's my recollection.
Okay.
This second revision by Ms. Deanen, what happens with that, since she's not here?
No, it's part of the record, it will be gone over.
No, hers wasn't presented at the last meeting.
Uh huh, okay.
Because I know if we're not here, and we want someone to speak in our behalf, we can't do that, so I didn't know.
Well, that, okay, we'll address that issue, and, okay, fine. If it will be brought up, you'll have another chance to comment.
I'll wait to the end, thank you.
I guess, though, that does bring up a good question, how are we going to vote on this? Are we going to vote on it section by section, letter by letter?
Yeah, let me comment on that, yes, we get concurrence or whatever as we go along, but then when we are finished, that's when you'd open it up again, and then we need to take a final vote on the whole document as amended or whatever, so that...
Two, two votes.
Yeah, we'll approve or disapprove each, as we go along, each section as we go along, and then take that material and vote on it as a final, complete document at the end.
Okay. Any other comments on the floor?
Roger Goodis, resident. I had mentioned something last week in regards to city council being sworn in, and perhaps I was not clear enough. I thought I was, but when these proposals show up, I would have assumed that city council, the new city council, would have had an organization meeting, and subsequently presented this following. That is not the case at this point. And now, I am looking at something, and I appreciate your work on this, Ms. Lorraine Gott, but I heard something disturbing here, that you had changed language here, and I know it's a difficult document to go to, but being from a background of crossing Ts and dotting Is, I'm looking at this document that was perhaps worded, and then I have to revert back to another document, the original, and compare each word. And hopefully, the intent was not lost, and I'm sure you have put in effort to ensure that there was no loss. I get it. But that, to me, is scary, and I've been on legal cases from a different perspective, where things were struck out and changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, Don, would you ever like to come first?
You're better. Must pass off, very hard to hear. Don McClaney, resident. Let me bring my computer up with me, with the document, I have not had time to read the document. I agree with Mr. De Curtis, if you want to revise an original document, I think you should just revise it, and just say, it says the same thing. Well, we just heard that attorneys get paid by nets, we can change a few nets and make a lot of buck. Anyway, I kind of agree with Mr. De Curtis on that particular issue. There are two other issues, and my understanding is, we will, as public, have an opportunity to address council on all of the issues.
Yes, when we are finished with the document, absolutely, we'll be back to the floor.
Steve Edley, I'm a resident. There is a section in the document that talks about when citizens' comments will be made. And it's basically, it seems to me that the intent of that section is to have citizens' comments before any vote is taken. It seems, once again, it seems to me, I'm being redundant here, that you're going to vote on individual sections, and then have citizens' comment at the end of the whole document. I would prefer, and I think it would suit people better, to have comments on individual sections before you vote on that section. I think that would be a lot more fair, because there are some of us who have concerns within the section, within multiple sections. And to have, to be able to, to be limited to three minutes at the end of it, to go back over something that you've already voted upon, doesn't seem to be within the spirit of the very document that you're about to pass.
March Green, resident. I have two comments, because of what Ms. Gott just brought up. I read the document, but I was concentrating on the changes, and I didn't realize until she said that tonight, that you wouldn't recognize the other changes that were made, just to simplify the language, unless you had both documents together. So I really haven't read all of the changes in that regard. The other thing that I'm very concerned about, and I don't know whether Mr. Beadle has rendered a legal opinion about the changes that are obvious, and that is that, just reading through it briefly, several things jumped out at me. I saw equal protection, I saw freedom of speech, I saw prior restraint, I saw breach of contract, I saw vagueness issues, just going through it very quickly. And I know Ms. And I know Ms. Gott is an attorney and she has put it in proper language as an attorney, but you pay Mr. Beadle to render legal opinions for the council to make sure that you're not buying a lawsuit down the road, that you're not going to be getting into some legal problems on any of those issues. I mean, that was just a cursory reading, those things jumped out at me. So I'm hoping that you have had Mr. Beadle look at it as your city attorney and that he is guiding you on that.
That is exactly in line with what I brought up originally when I asked about the city attorney. Because the same issues ring very, very clearly to me. And I agree 100%. If we're going to be doing line item for the changes, that's the way they need to be addressed. Otherwise, it'll be a complete total waste of time. The problem that I personally have is our previous council did a heck of a job with the budgeting and they identified issues that really stuck strongly with me regarding the grants. And a portion of this, the way I understood it, is that council members could be sanctioned if they go outside and check outside resources. To me, that seems like it might even cross the line and be a violation of public trust. Personally, I feel your fiduciary responsibility is to us and to check on these issues. The previous council, again, they're very diligent, trying to make sure everything is done legally to avoid the conflicts. If we have a council that's acting inappropriately, then why should we, as the taxpayers, suffer the consequences? We pay for losses. It's just, it's not right.
Fred Bailey, resident. I wanted to talk tonight a little bit about two items on section three related to quorum and electronic means of communications. But before I talk about that, you'd mentioned that you were going to get a legal, you'd asked for legal discussion on that, so I'd rather, before I make my comments, I'd like to know if there's a legal.
Well, what I would think we'll do there when we get to section three.
Okay, so I'll come back and talk about that when we get to section three.
Yes, and we'll talk, discuss again how we want to handle it among us here when we finish the first round of council.
Okay.
Yes, I can assure you this. I know for myself, I know our city attorney is not going to let us go astray and get ourselves in trouble. I've called him and talked to him on issues here to clarify terminology and so forth. So I think if we go through the process, you know, is what I hope we can do in a peaceful way.
Okay, I just, I was just curious because I know that I was with the city manager Cocoa Beach Tuesday morning and he indicated that maybe it just came up in discussion that they allow electronic means for communications to council, for council members. And so, so if there's some, if it's not legal, then it's probably not legal there either. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Here, any other comment? Here are none. I think, I like to see it section by section. I think it would be easier rather than at the end, it's going to be harder to comment, remember all the different sections, we'll clear up the section, move on, and let you have the council, the citizens' comments from there. Is that, okay, I agree. All right. Again, when you come up in this section of comments, please limit it to that section if you don't mind. And then at the end, open it up and you can do all of them again if you'd like, but for this, let's save time, do the section, okay? Okay. Hey, we're cut. Six more. You're on.
Okay, I want to address a couple of comments that have been made. First of all, we were each given a copy of the proposed changes as well as the current. And it's part of our homework to read both and to notice any differences, disparities or whatever. So that's a non-issue. The issue about lawsuits and legalities and so forth, this document is for conduct governing us, what we do. The only exception being regarding the last part, which is the, what has been in effect all along for many years regarding procedures that speakers follow when they come up here to address the council. So with that, section one, general provisions, election of vice mayor, number A. Is everybody okay with that? B, representing the city at official functions. Okay, C, city boards and committees, number one establishment. Two is vacancies on the boards. Three is interviews. I want to make one change there. The last sentence says, interview shall not be required for reappointments. I'm going to add to the same board. Are we okay?
Yes.
Number four is appointments. I added the word next, it shall be made at the next regular council meeting. That's the, that is the procedure that's being followed now. I simply put it in writing. Are we okay, everybody? Number five is council liaison. Here's an example of what the language was and I have stricken it. That has never been a true statement. We are not ex officio members of anything. The city code establishes who are members of each of the boards and the council is not a member of any of these boards. However, our city charter does address that we are liaisons to these boards and that's a different thing from being a member of the board. And so.
The only question I have there, Lorraine, is does this restrict you if you are asked a question?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because I have been, and I thought that's what this was getting at, but we weren't allowed to give our opinion of that.
No, you can answer any questions. What this gets at is you can't start directing the board to, you know, you shouldn't go in that direction or I don't want you to do this or whatever. But yes, you can answer anything that's addressed to you, you being the council liaison. And I wanted to add one word there where I start with each city board or committee, I want it to be each city's standing board or committee. We don't need liaisons to ad hoc committees. So each city's standing board or committee shall have a council member appointed. That's section one. No, it's not.
No.
Oh, I was having such a good time. Number D, adoption and amendment of policies. Number one is adoption. I simply added, and any amendments there too, would have the same procedures for being adopted. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
And number two is amendments to these policies and procedures. I added in that second line, it says these may be amended in response to a written request by any council member or city manager or any, I added Satellite Beach resident or taxpayer. It alludes to that someplace else later on in this document, current document. So I just pulled it out of there and brought it up here. And so it's also, any Satellite Beach resident or owner can also request.
So what this implies is if they are not a resident, but they're an owner?
That's correct. A business owner or they own land here and they rent it out or whatever, if they pay taxes in the city.
Good.
Or reside here.
I agree. Okay, everybody?
That's section one.
All right, open up the floor on section one. Do I hear any?
Roger Goodis, Satellite Beach resident. The section for Satellite Beach resident or taxpayer, I know you mentioned business owner, property owner. Does that also include property owner? Inclusive of a property owner who's got a second home here?
If you pay taxes in the city, you can request.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at, Ron.
Yeah.
Or if you own a home and you live elsewhere, but come here half the time in the year.
Yeah, I just, and then C, boards and committees, it may not fall under this, but we had a discussion on the CRA. What kind of board is that or is this exclusive? Is the CRA exclusive?
It's not addressing the CRA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the floor?
When you started, you were hearing, it's Frank. Kathy Arcarola, Saturday resident. Maybe next time I'll run for more, I don't know. You mentioned something about this document and I think I understand what Ms. Lorraine said about this is policies and procedures for yourself, it doesn't go outside or this or that. But I also took into consideration what the other people said about the document being scored out or this or that revised or anything else the lady that came up here. So can you give us confirmation if Mr. Beadle has reviewed this or agrees with the procedure of how this document has been changed because you say that you don't feel like he would lead us astray, but on this CRA issue, you know, he did lead us astray?
Well, then, we're discussing section one now, okay? Anything that has to do in section one.
I know, but we weren't able to come up before that to make a comment. You can't tell us if he has, he has.
Mr. Beadle will address it when we get sections at the end.
Okay.
What we did is the first round, remember, I asked people to speak on any issue. Then all we're speaking on now is each section. And then you're going to come back at the final, I'll do the whole thing and you can ask questions on anything.
But when the lady came up and said, has the lawyer reviewed this, is everything copacetic, da, 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 nobody gave an answer. You just, okay, thank you.
Steve Edley, still a resident. One of the sections deals with the not, interview shall not be required for reappointments, and I believe you just added to the same board. In so much that we reelect people all the time, I kind of disagree with this because in essence, it basically says it gives a sitting board member an advantage over someone who may be more qualified for that board. If you put people back into a pool, interview them all, you might be getting a better selection of people for various boards as opposed just to say, you don't need to be interviewed, see you later, bye.
If I ask, it's only the interview procedure. It's not to elect a person. He doesn't automatically get elected because he is not interviewed. It's just we've already done an interview with him, he's been on a board, appointed already. So he's not, it's not.
I understand that. I would argue though that even the interview process can change people.
Thank you.
Five, five seconds.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, section one? Okay, moving on.
May I address that?
Please.
It's been a longstanding policy in this city, people are appointed, can be appointed for two terms, two consecutive terms to a board. And because of that, you know, it's the council liaison's responsibility to report back to the council if there are problems on a particular board with any particular member. And as long as the council liaison is not finding a problem, then they are sort of under our longstanding policy entitled to be appointed for a second term on a board. Section two, council conduct. Number A, I left some blanks here. Lenore is in the process of coming up with the multitude of different governing documents that govern how council members conduct business in any number of scenarios. And that's why I left some blanks there. Those will be filled in and I did not envision filling in everything. She's putting together a wonderful notebook for us, but I was going to hit some of the highlights. For instance, the city charter will be given to us and main sections of the code or statutes or whatever. So that's, that's a work in progress, that one, in terms of what specifically will be addressed there. Are you all okay with that? Okay. B, circumventing city council or city manager. This is the controversial one. And every council member has a responsibility to protect the good name of the city. And when any council member deliberately goes around the expressed will of the council as shown in votes or other official actions of the council, and in an effort to try to bring a higher authority down, i.e. the state, down on the city to force the city to do something that a council member wants done that is contrary to what the council has lawfully decided to do, that is really inappropriate conduct because it leaves the impression in that state agency or county agency or wherever that Satellite Beach is a little bit screwed up. And it is our responsibility to make sure people understand our city is not screwed up and that our leaders are responsible for their behavior. This does not say they can't do it. You cannot stop people from doing what they're going to do, but it can say that when it is obvious that a scenario like that has occurred, this council can issue a resolution of censure to that individual and get the council's displeasure on the public record. And that's what that does.
All right, you're, can I comment? Please. To me, what this does is it suggests that council derives, council believes it derives its power from itself, when in reality, it's the people who we derive our power from. If the people don't like us going forward to try to educate ourselves about things that are going on in council by going to outside entities for either legal interpretations or more expert judgment than we can get internal to the, to the city, then the voters will vote us on. In my estimation, it is our sacred duty as elected members to educate ourselves as best as we can in order to make the decisions that we're making on council. And if we feel that we're not getting the proper information within the city, then I think it is our fiduciary duty to go ask for other guidance. The, to me, this really, it reeks of we won't tolerate dissent. And, you know, that's a, that's a doomsday function. That's not an elected body within the United States of America in my, in my take. We will not, we will not tolerate public dissension. That's, 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 to me, that's wrong. In my, we have used this before to educate ourselves as council members. So by saying this, we're suggesting that we want council to stay ignorant or uneducated and/or only educated by the city's take on things. And it limits information that council members then can have access to. For example, right after I was elected, I went to the Attorney General's website multiple times because I knew that, that we were being looked at for potential sunshine law violations to educate myself on sunshine law issues. And, and that would be going outside. I called the Attorney General's office, I asked them specifically about my website as a point in fact. And I got, I got an interpretation that varied a bit from Mr. Beadle's as a point in fact. Personally, and I say this with all due respect, personally, to me, this appears, it could be interpreted as an expression of punitive or vindictive abuse of power, to me. And I'm just throwing that out there. And that's, that's all I have on this specific issue.
Let me address his concerns.
Okay.
First of all, the statement about the singular, the power and authority from the singular body with one voice, this has nothing to do with the people or anything else. This council, the five council members have no power alone. The power comes from this council acting as a unified body, speaking with at least a majority voice. And, and that's when council's decisions, that's when decisions from council members mean something, is when this body has acted on something. In addition, this doesn't do anything about prohibiting anybody from contacting anybody about getting any kind of information before the council votes as a body and takes an action as a body.
So what happens if the, I understand what you're saying, but what happens, where I was coming from, the decisions made, this council member or multiple council members believe the decision is in, is not in accordance with whatever statute or policy or whatever, and then they take it out. They, they will be censored or they have a high probability of being censored.
There are some folks who won't take note for an answer and it doesn't matter how many legal opinions they get, they're going to seek, to find a way to get, to circumvent the will of the council, the unified will of the council. And that puts the city in a bad light. It.
To me, it puts the city in a worse light if a poor decision is made by the majority of. of council, and a council member didn't stand up and make that point known to save the city embarrassment, by going out and finding out what the right answer is. The power, whatever that term means, in our little two-and-a-half-square-mile city and 10,000 residents, whatever power means, is not derived from the five of us sitting up here making unanimous decisions or majority decisions. The power is derived, for whatever that means, by the votes of people.
Now, we're talking apples and oranges. I'm talking about the power of this council, and power in the law has its own definition, its own meaning, and it's not the same as authority, although they can be interlocked. But the council's power comes from a vote of the body, not from five individual members acting unilaterally. Each of us has no power to decide what this council will do unless it has been brought before this council, and this council has acted as a body, meaning that it got at least a majority vote. And for, and I said in here, on a case-by-case basis, the council should make determinations whether or not violations have occurred, it becomes pretty obvious very quickly who is just refusing to take no for an answer. You know, I've been voted down before, and I recognize that what the council did was a lawful action, and I simply, as a council member, on the losing side of a vote, have to accept that, and not pick up my marbles and go home ticked off. And I certainly shouldn't be calling Tallahassee, or Brevard County, or any other entity to tattle on what you all did because you disagreed with me. And that's what I'm talking about, it's inappropriate behavior, and I think censure is an appropriate response. But again, that would be a decision of the body council.
I understand the intent, but I think there's a lot of difference between going out and getting information, and going out to go behind the backs of the council to cause an issue with council legally. If we did it legally, we voted on it legally, and the council member wants to go out and obtain more information, I think that's great, no problem at all. My problem is, is I didn't like the way something was, I went and tried to sabotage it, which causes more harm to the city.
I don't agree with sabotaging either, but...
But I know the intent here, I mean...
Right. What if the council member in question truly believes it was an illegal act? Then I believe it is that person's duty to take it outside.
Let me ask this, because I'm going to bring this up, and I hate to go back to old times, but it cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars at one point, when the council member continued not believing multiple times. Attorney General's report, he just kept going up the line until, unfortunately, it cost a man his home and everything else, it was up the line. So where is that? I understand the balance, that we have to have faith in our government system, not only here, between the five of us, but our whole government system, that at some point, the person that makes the decision, we have to go, we've got to believe somebody on the system here. You can keep going up and up, until a point where it becomes detrimental. And, that's what I worry about. The information, the information is, and I want all these information, I got some emails from Fred, and I told him I appreciate, I want the information, I want the information from everybody. If I feel we did something legally wrong, I would hope the city attorney would stop us, okay? And if I didn't believe it, and I went and found information, information's different than going behind someone's back with the sole purpose to discredit the council.
You're assuming you know what's in their heart when they do that. What I'm saying, I wasn't here when that happened, I think I know who you're talking about. I would say, you know, if the guy or gal read an attorney general opinion, and it was 180 out from his, then he should have taken the darn attorney general's opinion. What I'm talking about is exactly the opposite of that. Somebody who is familiar with whatever the law is that the finding was about, that the vote was on, believes, because of that person's experience, that what the vote voted on was actually an illegal act, and takes that up. Because to me, that person has a duty, has a duty to the city, to take up what that person believes is an illegal decision.
You're real obvious.
Can I just say one thing? Attorney General report, I asked a few judges, and I asked, Jim, it's just another, it has no real legal ground, right? It's just another person's opinion. Is that a true statement?
But an attorney general's.
It's still an opinion. Did Beadle tell you that? A judge.
Let me, I was given these to read into the record for Councilwoman Deanan, so let me, she has on this item, and then the one on electronic attendance, so it's not, neither one of them are that long, so hers are along the lines of what Councilwoman Billman's were. "I recommend the city's legal council provide an interpretation explicit in and written form regarding the proposed amendment to Section 1, Council Conduct. I further request inclusion of any Florida AG opinions and/or legal cases prohibiting a council member from contacting outside entities referenced in the response. The amendment as written appears to be a gag and will affect council members, that is, individual members, from performing their due diligence before voting on items, and may render a council member liable for not being knowledgeable or respect to all issues under consideration, and further diminishes the principle of open government. Council members may be censured per the sunshine law, however prohibiting individual council members from contacting outside entities, perenn, professional associations, government, quasi-government, judicial, consulting firms, and city contract firms, close perenn, limits the council member from performing their due diligence with respect to issues they may or may not be voting on. Council members are bound to fully research all agenda items, including other city matters, to perform their legislative obligations and responsibilities to the city and the citizens of Satellite Beach. Council is a singular body based on majority vote, not a unanimous one. A decision is rendered, however, prior to the final vote, council members, council members, individuals, and not as a council unanimous vote."
Let me give you a concrete example of what I'm talking about, and I'm not talking about trying to gather information, because that certainly is a valid thing to do. There was a specific incident in which the council took an action to have the city attorney send a letter to the JALAC, summarizing some actions that the council as a body had decided to take regarding the CRA issue. And the council had agreed upon, had reached a settlement agreement, which was summarized by the city attorney in his letter to JALAC. It was the council's intent that the agreement not go forward with the letter. The letter was sent, and a council member then, without telling anyone, went ahead and sent that agreement to the JALAC office. That was an obvious intent, circumvent the will of the council. That's the kind of conduct I'm talking about. I'm not talking about getting information.
What I hear you saying is that this B particularly deals with after-the-fact actions, things that people do after the fact, not before. So you can do all the research you want, after the fact, it has been voted on, it is done.
As indicated by council votes or other official actions, after the fact.
After the fact, exactly.
But I understand where you're coming from, but my point is, is even after the fact, if a council member believes that the decision that was made by council is somehow illegal, I believe that person has a responsibility to take it forward.
Okay. And Mr. Beadle, what's that person's responsibility to take it forward?
I'm not sure I can really answer that succinctly, because in part, it's going to depend on what the alleged violation is. You know, basically, what you're talking about is whistleblowing. I mean, that's essentially what you're alluding to.
There's protection for that.
Correct. So there's going to be protections for that issue anyway, by statute. I know there is for the federal, and my recollection, I haven't looked at the state statute in a long time, but I believe they have the same kind of protection in the state statute.
Censor, I mean, but what we're saying here, by this, by the way this is written, we could censor a whistleblower.
No, because they are protected by law.
They'd be protected by law from sanctions. I mean, that's what I'm saying, a whistleblower, you can't take adverse... I mean, I'll have to look at that. I mean, I didn't look at this specifically. Obviously, council has the power to approve something along these lines, so, you know, I don't, I didn't get involved. And the thing about it is, council could do this under Robert's rules of order without any, I mean, basically, what council is doing by doing this, is they're basically saying, this is a type of conduct that we don't want individual council members to engage in, and that can subject you to censure. Whereas Robert's rules of order gets kind of wide open as far as, you know, what's subject to censure.
And aren't council members citizens? And don't citizens have the right of free expression?
Are we limiting a council member's right of free expression just because that person's a council member? Do we lose our rights as elected officials to freely express ourselves?
And this doesn't say that at all.
Please, please.
And this doesn't say that at all. It says to take action, to act individually, to thwart or circumvent the lawful will of the council, as indicated by council votes or other official actions. It doesn't say anything about thwarting free speech or getting information.
But again, if that person believes in his or her part that there is an infraction that they need to, that they believe has occurred, then I believe it's in that citizen's, it's within that citizen's right to freely express him or herself.
Shouldn't that citizen express that right before the vote is taken?
No, I'm saying, I hope the heck that person...
That's how it should go down.
And fought vehemently against it.
Right.
I hope that would have happened. So let me ask you this.
Let me ask this question. If that is the main concern, I mean, not to hold up the rest of the process, but if that's what council wants me to look at, is what the items are, for instance, under the whistleblower statute, to see what the protections are, for lack of a better way of putting it in the statute, to make sure that that kind of activity, whether a censure action would, or would not fall within one of the protections of the, for instance, the whistleblowing statute, and if it's not, then we could potentially have that as an amendment to what Ms. Gott's proposing, if that is what your major concern is about the proposal. If there's something else, then obviously, we need to address that too, but that's, but I clearly understand that issue.
Yeah, I would say my two are whistleblower, and I guess associated with it, and it could be the same for that matter, but associated, closely associated with it, would be the citizen's right to express him or herself, if that person believes there's been a violation. That probably is a whistleblower function, but I'm not a lawyer, you two are, but if they're not associated, then I think we should discuss both of those issues, or make sure that this doesn't violate either of those issues.
Right. Gathering information and whistleblowing.
Okay.
I think so. At least, you know, we get it, we do our homework. Moving on, are we finished council discussion on?
On B, we are, as far as I'm concerned.
We are, I bet you they are.
Yeah, well, right, but we'll get to them, and also, obviously, this is going to come back, Jim's going to do the information for us here, and come back hopefully with a report.
Okay, so B is pending, shall we say?
Pending, please, yes. Okay, C.
Let me go on.
Okay.
C, interference in city administration.
I have no problem. I do, with wording. I know the intent, but my thing is, is I'd like to be able to talk to city staff, as long as I do not require any action.
I think the operative word there is directing.
You can talk, I just want to make sure, because the first word here is, "All interaction between city council and city personnel regarding city government should occur through the city manager."
That's a quote from the city charter, so we can't be changing that.
I just want to make sure that as long as there's no required action, that I can gather information, talk to the chief.
All this says is that you can't go down to public works and say, "Mr. Potter, I want that pothole on my street fixed by 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon."
I understand, I...
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
You know, and it's an innocuous suggestion, but just advise the city manager, you need to go talk to somebody on staff. I mean, I don't know if he'd even hear, but I mean, that's the easiest way to deal with that issue, is just let the city manager know that you're going to be doing that.
He'd probably accept it now.
Well, you know, somebody even brought up a circumstance where if you are driving around and you see a pothole on such-and-such a street, and you run into Alan Potter, and you say, "Hey, Alan, just wanted to let you know there's a pothole on such-and-such street," and then move on, you know, you don't need to go to the city manager to say that sort of thing, and this does not prohibit that. It just says you will not go to department heads and tell them what to do.
Please, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, are we all right on that? Okay, and then D, when a council member is unable to perform a function that the city has paid for, a ticket will be offered to a city staff person, or else the council member will refund the city's money.
Has that been a problem?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
That's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay. Section 3. Section 2, open for public comment. John?
John Ferguson, 135 Mainville. On the whistleblower section, as I'll call it, the word lawful is in there, so there's no problem. If what they go making an inquiry about is illegal, this section doesn't cover it. They don't get censored. It's only when it's lawful. And the point is, the city pays a lot of money for a city attorney. That city attorney represents the council. The first stop for somebody that thinks there's a legal problem had better be the city attorney. And if they think the city attorney's giving them bad advice, I would very much suggest that they tell him so, and probably the city manager, and say, "I'm going to seek other advice." It kind of sounds like in the military, jumping the chain of command, which is a quick way to end a career. So I'd suggest that that be in there in some form.
Thank you. I would just point out that you don't know what's unlawful necessarily until after you make the inquiry.
Charles Titten, the resident city. If four city council persons believe they are educated enough, and they vote on this, and they pass this, then it is disloyal, and I don't know what else to call it, for a fifth person to go outside of this and try to cause difficulty on this. Now, nobody is going to understand that they're not uninformed, but I have sit up in the council since I started becoming interested in what was going on, and I have heard an auditor be here, or I have been heard one of our professional administrative people dealing with the accounting person, and I've heard a city council person tell the bookkeeper, not the bookkeeper, the accountant, tell them, "Why don't you do it this way?" And I've heard the council, the staff person say, "I checked with the state," or "I checked with the auditors, and they said this was a generally accepted accounting procedure to do that." And I've heard that same person continually dispute what the attorney said, I've heard the person dispute what the professional said, and some people do not understand that maybe they are wrong. But to let a person sabotage this council when the council takes that action, then you've got to censor somebody who is going to... that action, then you've got to censor somebody who is going to cause trouble, and it caused our enemies to be bad within the community. Now, I'm sure some of you remember the incident of which John's speaking.
Thank you.
Big fine citizen. I, I've sat here for many, many, many years, uh, listening to council, and going back through history. We had a city council member that was consistently out of voters four to one, refused the attorney general's, uh, ruling, and sued the city six times, okay? He's lost every, eight times, excuse me, he's lost every one of those cases because we have a very able and knowledgeable city, uh, attorney. Uh, it's caused him a lot of money in attorney's fees. Now getting back to the gist of things, so let's say we have another situation like that. The city attorney advises this council member that, listen, you're wrong, you are not legally correct. That council member then further goes to, says, okay, I don't believe you, I think you're wrong, so I'm going to go to state attorney general, I'm going to find out. Goes to the state attorney general, and the state attorney general gives a finding. Why can't that council member come back to you and say, hey, this is the fine state attorney general, I was wrong, I was right, I don't care what the state attorney general says, I'm going to go to Tallahassee. That's when you're going into a problem.
I agree with that.
That's why you're a problem. See, the thing is, there's a common sense way and an easy way of doing things. It's very easy, you know? It's, first of all, you, I have never, in many years have I sat back here, or have had so much bad press against Satellite Beach in twenty, thirty some odd years, as I've had in the last year. A lot of it was misinformation coming from council members who appeared in, in print, uh, uh, as guest columnist. Basically, I'm saying it, it's a very simple process, you need to put it in place. It's not about the science, folks.
Thank you. I had some hands in the back before, um, here, please, thank you.
I actually did read the state whistleblower.
Sir, please say your name.
Patrick Mokave, resident.
Thank you.
I actually did read the whistleblower statutes, and I think when you do read it, or the attorney reads it, this is a wasted discussion, because you do have the right to do this, they cannot interfere. If you truly believe what you're reporting, you're really wasting the discussion. I, I would suggest maybe you take a break, let the attorney look it up, take him two minutes.
Thank you. Back, who is having the back, Steve, Ron, either one of you, please.
Resident, Satellite Beach. Perhaps we all are all looking for, as quoted by somebody very famous in the past, reason, justice, and truth. And that should be the basis of any governing body. I understand after a vote, that part of the problem here is, as was stated again by a very noteworthy other individual, we do not have a bicameral system. Balance of powers, if I can explain, excuse me. And what I'm searching for here is, after the vote is taken, um, and some of the circumstances were mentioned here, I'm not familiar with the past, I am familiar with that one circumstance that happened here, uh, just recently, where Councilman Gott is referring to. I'm not so sure it falls, falls under that principle, but I will accept your statement at this point, because I have not done the research on it, didn't expect that. We're talking in generalities right now. I wish that the, our legal staff, um, look at the whistleblower act, and potentially add to this amendment here, um, because also what happens here, the way it's worded, um, perhaps there's no other legal course for a minority opinion, and those are the rights we have to watch for. And I will emphasize, perhaps, citizens need legal counsel through all this. And there are bodies that do that. Thank you.
Steve?
Headed, we're in a path up to the podium. I actually did some research on this for a while ago. There is a Florida statute that talks about this very instance, that says that unless the city council or governing body is meeting as a quasi judicial board, that anything, any type of investigation, any type of contact, any type of anything, as long as it's done within the sunshine laws, is legal. I believe you're having a problem here, where you might get into a thing where a supremacy clause or the supremacy of Florida statutes tramples what you're trying to write here.
Thank you, Steve.
Kathy Alcarola, Satellite Beach resident. Um, for provision D, as far as if someone has a ticket to go somewhere, this, whatever, so you guys put something that if they're sick, or there's a, a death in the family or this or that, and they can't make it for legit reasons, then the council person won't be held responsible for the price of that ticket. Maybe you need to clarify that, you know, because things do come up, or family situations, and, you know. As far as B goes, I cannot believe that I'm standing here, listening to council talk about authority, power, sabotage, can't do this, 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 and this, and all this crap that went out over the elections that came through our mailboxes, and yet people still speak about the right things to do, and this, we're not in school anymore. I didn't, I didn't vote for you guys to all have the same opinion and be on board and everything else. I like the heat, I like, I like the diversity, I like the, I like people being independent and thinking and stuff. So if it's four to one, four to one, four to one, and that one person, even about the CRA, goes above the head and finds out and this and that, then so be it. What are you trying to hide, are you trying to hide something here, that you're worried that, you know, our, our reputation's going to be a problem? Who gives a crap? We'll, we'll take care of ourselves, you know? To me, it's like, well, everybody has to think the same, and don't go out, forget the reputation thing, it's going to take a while for that to cool down, but we all love each other, so who cares what anybody else thinks? But really, to put conduct issues on professionals sitting and representing us, I think is a bunch of shiza, and it's, I find it disgusting and immature.
March Green, resident. Uh, the, um, I'm questioning the purpose of B. If we already have procedures in effect under Robert's Rules of Orders that would allow the council to express displeasure with each other, why do we need to put something in here that is, um, when I first read it, I also read it as a gag order, uh, and I read it as being punitive against those of us who had, had been speaking up, you know, throughout the meetings. Uh, I see vagueness and overbroad issues in it, and even when Ms. Scott was trying to talk about the different examples that she was bringing up, words were popping up like, okay, who's going to define, who's going to define thwart or circumvent, who's going to define, I mean, lawful is easy, but, you know, you're just, you're, you're asking for an awful lot of trouble with B that's not necessary. If the gag and punitive part of it was not the reason for putting it in, then I'd like to know what is the reason? Why do you need that section? Kind of like what she was saying, you know, do we really need to regulate conduct? I felt the same way when we discussed the civility issue last year, I thought, you know, come on, guys.
Thank you very much.
Andy Grimm, Satellite Beach resident. Congratulations, 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 I'm being elected. Um, item B is a bad idea, because for those things that should warrant some type of disciplinary action, they're already covered in existing statute. The nature of this particular text, as I read it, I concur with the two prior speakers, that it opens the door for somehow stopping dissent, even on issues, forget legality for a moment, but just things in which the council does something that is perceived as a bad idea. I like the idea that council members can debate things prior to the vote, but they also have the freedom to, if they still feel attached to a position that is not in line with the voting council members, that they can still talk about it. Fools will always be exposed for being fools. Those who are right in the long run will eventually be exposed as being right in the long run. It would seem to me that you would save yourself a lot of effort by just removing item B from councils and procedures, because there's more than enough other stuff to take care of your principal concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Tom, back, Don?
Don McLendon, resident. When this item, now that I've listened to the discussion, uh, and Councilwoman Gott is the one that brought it out, it came up a year or so ago, over J-LAT and the attorney general's opinion due to transfer of CRA funds into the, uh, general funds, operating funds of the city. Um, one former employer of the city made a comment that night, when I had made a comment, that, and made this comment to council, new council, that this was simply an opinion of the attorney general. Well, just like what another councilman just said, well, if that opinion could be guilty, you go to jail. My response to Supreme Court makes opinions of all time, those are lawful opinions, they are opinions, people practice law and form opinions, and our laws are derived and enforced and from those opinions. As far as the image of the community, I don't like, uh, Satellite Beach being put up as inept, or, uh, something illegal going on, or, um, and I don't like the citizens being defrauded, is what I also brought up, uh, when this opinion thing came up, it was certainly within the city's right to transfer these funds, or council's right to counter these funds, that may be, even if that's true, the citizens of the city were still deceived. We were not told that the city was essentially broke, and if we had not transferred those funds, we can pay payroll. Statements like this have what's well-known as a chilling effect upon democratic society. And, uh, I, I think the people's right to speak and be heard, be, uh, available, including council members, I agree with the former speaker that, and Councilwoman, that perhaps some people will be revealed in their own time for their opinions, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a bad idea, anyway.
Other comment? Here are none. Section three.
Regarding council meetings, first one, A is public notice, the only thing added here was adding to the city's website, the, the generals. Um, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, B is a quorum. Um, the AGO opinion nine oh nine dash fifty-six requires that, uh, um, a quorum must be physically present at a council meeting in order to constitute a quorum. Um, and then, um, the other sentence is, is currently in the, um, policies and procedures. Are we all right with it, with that?
Yes.
C, attendance by electronic means. Um, I want to delete the AGO oh three dash forty-one in parentheses, um, in a discussion with someone, I, I realized that they got confused by that. Um, and, um, so the rest of it, um, there are multiple attorney general opinions which deal with, um, attending by, as they, the terminology used is interactive electronic technology, and, um, all of them consistently say that the only time, um, uh, attendance by electronic means can occur is in extraordinary circumstances, and, um, um, local governments have home rule powers to make their own determination as to what constitutes an extraordinary circumstance. Uh, AGO opinions have specifically said that, um, uh, illness and physical disability constitute extraordinary circumstances, but those are the only two scenarios in which the AGO has actually, um, um, given an opinion on what an extraordinary circumstance is. So this proposes that extraordinary circumstances shall be, um, illness or other medical problem of the council member, or his or her immediate family, death in the council member's family, and unanticipated and unavoidable personal circumstances requiring the council member to be out of the city. Out of city vacations and business trips shall not be deemed extraordinary circumstances. And I will give my rationale for that. Um, first of all, um, I do like to honor traditions, Satellite Beach, um, has a lot of traditions, um, and I think that the residents here value those. We are a small town, um, uh, city, and, um, we have always had our council members present, uh, for meetings and other functions at which they were expected to be present. Um, if we talk specifically about skyping or even phone attendance, um, those things are very disruptive, and when a council member attends by those means, what they are requesting, expecting, requiring, is for the rest of the council to put up with multiple inconveniences, inconveniences and meeting disruptions, um, uh, while that person is on the phone, or on Skype, or on some other electronic, um, means. Um, the connections are lost multiple times throughout a meeting, the meeting has to stop while the connection is reinstated. Specifically regarding Skype, when, um, the person is on the big screen, uh, that means that the ability to use the screen for a PowerPoint, um, is lost, and there was an actual circumstance where our fire chief had a PowerPoint presentation that he was prepared to give the council, and he couldn't do it because the council member was present by Skype. Um, so, um, business trips, um, are, um, are simply not an extraordinary circumstance, in my opinion, and, um, I think that they should not be allowed. And I also want to mention, uh, the city charter is actually very generous in terms of the number of regular council meetings that can be missed before someone is disqualified from, from continuing on council. Um, there is no limit to the number of special or workshop meetings that, uh, a council member can miss, the, the only thing that is governed by the city charter is regular meetings, and what it comes down to is a total of, um, you can miss seven, um, regular council meetings within any twelve month period, or, um, three consecutive ones, if you miss four consecutive ones, or you miss eight within a, uh, any consecutive twelve month period, then, uh, you are no longer on the council. Um, so that's my rationale for this.
Well, that's interesting, because I missed eight in the last year.
Not regular.
The total, yeah, you're right. Um, but obviously, that's, the, the elephant in the room is this is, I'm, tipper's on me right now, this is targeting me, um, and...
This is targeting me, and I think, obviously, it's unfair. What you're doing, and this isn't because of me, I could give a darn, but what you're doing by instituting this policy is you're restricting the ability of any executive or anybody who travels for a living from ever serving the city. I tell you, yes, I've been gone, and I'll be gone even more, because I'm taking on more responsibility. And, yeah, I'm, you know, I've got my executive job, plus I'm a corporate pilot. Most of my trips I fly, have to do with my work, but every now and then I'll, I have to go fly the airplane on and on, so, and I have even more responsibility to come. So I'm going to be gone more than I've been gone. Are we saying that we don't want to allow businesspeople who travel for a living to serve this city? I would say that that's a bad idea, because it's businesspeople and executives who tend to have a better idea of administrative and operational efficiency. And we're not going to, we're going to restrict their capability. To me, for my particular circumstance, I think it would disenfranch, if I'm gone, and I will, I tell you, if this happens, I'll be gone soon, probably by summer, this is going to disenfranchise everybody who voted for me, who didn't understand, like I didn't understand, that this was going to be a impact. It usurps the, well, I'm not even going to get into that part. Well, yeah, I am. If this happened to me now, this would usurp what the citizens voted for with referendum to, by all, for all intents and purposes, because the supermajority issue wouldn't apply at that point. Because obviously, I would imagine that whoever would be appointed at my seat, when I'm just assuming here, but would be more inclined to vote with the majority when it comes to the budget. So there goes the supermajority issue. But in the end, I realize, like I've said before, when we won the election and when the reform folks lost the last election, that elections have consequences, have consequences. And it's, the ball's going to roll the way the ball's going to roll. But I really think we're doing the city a disservice if we don't allow this to occur, because we are going to restrict people who travel for a living from ever being able to serve the city.
Can I read Cheryl?
Please.
This is Councilwoman Deanan's comments. I have no issue with a council member attending a meeting via remote means, per and telephonic Skype, et cetera, close quote, regardless of their personal and/or business situation, provided there is a physical quorum, three members per city charter at the designated public meeting place. In lieu of dismissing alternative methods for physical attendance, I would like to suggest that our city policy include a provision allowing a minimum of 48 hours' notice be given to the city manager unless there is a health or personal family emergency requiring no notice. Technology has changed dramatically over the past and thus revolutionizing our methods of communication. Methods of communicating and attending meetings now allow people to be mobile if necessary, no matter what the situation. All of those who volunteer as city council members may face situations where their jobs and/or personal responsibilities require electronic remote attendance from time to time. EAG, the one that will be deleted, the reference opinion was discussed before our council meetings when the decision to allow remote council meeting attendance. I would like the council to consider our legal counselor's past interpretation of the opinion on why electronic remote attendance may not be admissible today.
My thing, this is not towards you or anyone. At all. I travel. I, I mean, I, I traveled a lot when I was on council before, and I never Skyped in. It wasn't available. My issue is, it's not a personal issue, it's available to anybody. Anybody can Skype in. It doesn't matter who you are, you have it. It's not just, in your case, right now, you do use it more than probably the others, but it's not a personal, correct. Now, my concern is, again, first, the law. Second is, I wish our system would be better when we use, if we use it. Because I've sat in the audience, and maybe it's just the system in here is not up to par, but it clicks off a lot during the meetings, a lot. And it is disruptive, you know, if the technology was better. Technology's coming, and I, I mean, it's used every day. I hold meetings where I work, and we're all on Skype, so it's there. My first thing is the law. I mean, I think I'm in a position, I need to uphold what the law says. Now, I'm a little bit more flexible. Cheryl had a comment there, it said, "time to time." Do we do something on a trial for 60 days and you get X number of Skype ins, because they don't count as a miss, and see how the system, but time to time, you know, is something that I would, you know, consider myself. I just think it's something that is coming. It's here, people use it in business every day. I don't want to break the law from the position of what we're allowed to do. Well, my understanding is, we wouldn't be breaking the law by doing it. It's the, it's the decision, like Ms. Gott said, it's the decision of council whether or not a business should qualify as an extraordinary circumstance.
That is correct. Yeah, the attorney, there's, there's several attorney, as Ms. Gott indicated, there are several Attorney General's opinion that have specifically addressed extraordinary circumstances in the context of death in the family, or an illness, or something like that. Those are the only ones they've expressly addressed those on. There is a comment in the opinions that indicate that individual, in this case councils, can make a decision what other items may constitute extraordinary circumstances.
And your point about, Mr. Mayor, your point about time to time or the 48-hour requirement, it sounds good when you say it fast. Unfortunately, in reality, most people, I think, who travel for a living, many times get very short notice hacking. I know, that's, that's mine. And I'm not asking for this, well, I am, let's face it, asking for this for my own good, but I'm also asking for it for the good of folks in the future who would like to serve this city, who are going to, who are going to be in the same situation I am.
Okay, the issue I've got with this is that, at some point, all five of us are going to want to Skype in. How are we going to let? I mean, so we go down this path, that you want to have, oh, just one person Skyped in, and next week it's going to be Lorraine? You know what? I don't feel like coming to council meeting tonight, because the Dolphins are playing. I don't want to stay home and Skype in. So I think, I, I, I'm against the Skype-in process. I think you got elected to be here, I think you need to be here. If you can't be here, that's okay, Greg, I mean, that's all right. But I just do think you need to be here. That's, that's just my opinion. But this Skype-in all the time is not right, because pretty soon, the whole, everybody in the room is going to be Skyping into a meeting, and we can't do that, because it's going to happen to more than one of us. What if I want to go out of town next week, and you want to go out of town? Well, who's going to Skype in, and who's going to miss? Then we got to talk about that. I think we all need to be here if we can.
Well, then, maybe we make, maybe we make an exception, only the exception being, it's one thing to go out of town to see the Dolphins, it's quite another thing when you're being called out of town on, on, on business. So maybe that's the exception that we make. Maybe the exception is for professional requirements versus, you know, just really merely wanting to go watch the Dolphins.
I think you just need to be here, period. I mean, that's, and the, and the, as Lorraine said, there's a liberal indication in the charter that you can miss a certain number of meetings, and it really shouldn't be an issue for you. But really, I think you're trying to make it an issue, but I don't think it's really going to be an issue. You can cover it all.
I, 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 I need to go talk to my boss.
First of all, using the phrase "from time to time" is meaningless. It's too vague. It, it, how do you enforce that? What does that mean? And secondly, it has been the tradition in the city that folks, I've talked to a number of people over the years, that I thought would make good council members, and they have demurred, because they said that they don't have time because of their job, and they have to go out of town on trips and so forth, and they didn't run. It's a reality. It is a reality. So you, you wait until you can run. I agree with Councilwoman Breimer, that your duty, when you are elected, your first duty is to this city, and you need to be present for duty.
My duty, you're right, is to the city, which is why I Skype in. It's not the easiest thing to do, to make my schedule while I'm away, work, to be able to get back to my hotel room and Skype into the city. That has actually taken quite a toll on my, on my business trip. But I do it because my duty is to this city. And wouldn't it have been nice if some of those folks who you talk about, who demurred from running for council, could have run for council and served this city by using technological media?
No, no, they made the right decision. In my opinion, yes, in my opinion.
Any other comments from council here? Go to the floor. Steve, you had your hand up first in the back?
Eight?
No, Steve.
This is going to sound like Greg Billman and I had lunch today. We didn't. Trust me, I don't think we want to eat together. Look, there are several things going on here. First, to, to try and postulate that this is not a shot across the bow of Mr. Billman is ridiculous. Nobody, I haven't talked to anybody who believes that. I'm sorry. It just, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Secondly, I totally agree with him. It disenfranchises people from their vote. The last time that Mr. Billman ran against a council member was against Mr. Breimer, and he won. Okay? So now you're basically telling people that voted for Mr. Billman that their vote didn't count. Lastly, I'm sorry, three people on this council ran on a platform, on their mailers, talked about it, about the CRA, about the board's disbanding, and one of the things that they said was that it would limit participation in city government. Well, there he sits. There he sits, you are limiting people. I've been in these meetings, and frankly, I've been probably in more than meetings than Mr. Billman and Mr. French have Skyped in. I don't agree with them all the times. In fact, sorry, don't agree with them often, and that's okay. I have never found them to be disruptive. I've never found a problem with it. I've made jokes about it, that he's on the big screen, it's the eye of Sauron for a hobbit reference. Okay? It is not a big deal. If anything, what we're saying is, the law, in my opinion, exists, or the rule exists, to make sure that council members are engaged in the process and are informed of the process. Over this past year, no one ever accused Mr. Billman or Mr. French of not being informed or not being involved in the process. If anything, the accusation was that they were overly involved. This is wrong. This is just flat-out wrong. We live 30 miles from NASA. We put men on the moon, women in space, and we're looking at building the ports on asteroids and the moon, and we're telling some guy, he's got to make a choice between his family and his business and serving this community. I ain't buying it. You guys made a promise, in my opinion, that the participation of people was paramount. The most participation was paramount, and this is a step back away from that campaign flagpole, and I don't think you can get around that.
I think if you make this where you can vote out Mr. Billman, you're circumnavigating the whole voting process. I mean, somebody could come in here and manipulate, somebody with a lot of money could come in and manipulate this whole entire city by hiring Mr. Breimer. Somebody with a lot of money that could make sure that he's not present. It'd be his job, a tremendous amount of money. Same thing with you, same thing with you, Mrs. Gott. You would circumnavigate what people wanted, and you know what? If the people don't like the fact that Greg's not going to be here when the next election goes up, he won't be voted in. And maybe that's what's going to happen with the three changes, maybe that's what everybody wants. But by you guys making this rule and changing it, you're just manipulating the system, and that's not the way it's supposed to be. I mean, somebody else could come in, really manipulate it a lot. I don't know if you guys have bosses or not, but they could literally do it. And somebody with a lot of money could do it. So I totally disagree with this. Thank you.
March Green, resident. I also, when I read it, could only think that it was aimed at Mr. Billman specifically, and I agree with a lot of the points that he made about disenfranchising those of us who voted for him, knowing that he was a businessman, and we wanted that, we wanted the benefits of that. We knew he was going to be out, we accepted the, the Skyping or whatever we had to do to have him here. I would say that I don't like the provision at all. I don't think it should be in there, but if you're going to put it in there, then I think it's going to have to be for future reference. I think you're going to have to grandfather Mr. Billman in. I don't think you can change it in the middle. Those of us who have voted for him, that want him in here, and that knew the circumstances, that should stay the same. If you do it, you need to amend it so that he is permitted to continue to Skype, and that does not count against him as an absence.
Kathy Markarola, Satellite Beach resident. Wow, here we are again about power, control, all this stuff that we definitely don't want on the board. Let's face it, we're not ignorant. While you guys were elected, Mr. French is gone, Mr. Rose is gone, and Mr. Billman is left. You didn't win by much of a margin, and I'm being respectful. There's a lot of people out there that did want Scott, and did want Cheryl, and still want Mr. Billman, or saddened that Lloyd is gone. So you didn't win by much, so now you're, you're on the board, and every little thing now is about, oh, now you got to show up, now you got to this, now you got to that, all these rules and things and everything, and it's just not right. We did, we did.
Just, we're, the vote count and all that, we need to talk on the issue of the Skyping right now.
I voted for Mr. Billman. I think you speak about technology and how wonderful it is. The man uses technology, and you slay him for it, because he's not here. Make even mind, are you for technology, or are you not for technology? Okay? I think it's pretty cool that we have a Skype, and there's a picture, and this and that breaks up the boringness and monotony and all that. He only went out once or twice, and he kind of perks you up, and you know, it eliminates the, the, some of the stuff that's going on that's kind of boring. So you're for technology, but you don't, you don't want him to Skype. I don't care if we only make six meetings a year. I voted for him, I like his ideas, I agree with him most of the time, and you're taking away my privilege when you take him out of the seat. And I agree with the lady behind me, in that if you're going to do this, come up with this new, this new rule, because now you're all about rules all of a sudden, then it should be when his term expires. We need people that are educated like yourselves, that are professionals, that are executives, that own their own businesses. This is what we need. And if you can't be here all the time because of family or work, that's fine, we understand.
You said it was going to be spirited, didn't you? I did. I've listened to a lot of discussions, and a lot of points that I haven't really considered, and I've sent you all the points that I wanted you to consider as well. One of the things that you haven't mentioned is, we have a city council of five members, and we expect all of the five members to participate in meetings. Well, if there's a way to let them participate in meetings, and it's by, it's by using Skype or GoToMeeting or some other way to get them here, by the way, you can, you can use PowerPoint and see somebody's picture on the same screen, there's technology to do that, if that's an issue. But the whole point is, we want, we want everybody's input, so why not count a person's present, whether it be a quorum vote, or whether it be a, the electronic media? Why not count that person here if you can get them here? You want everybody's input. I think that's what we're trying to do. I don't, I don't, just, I don't get the logic of not allowing a, a person to have input to a council meeting that can, that can only be done by Skype. It just doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's my point.
Thank you. Just to make one comment. Just to make it clear about the issue of a quorum, there's, I don't know, probably close to 10 Attorney General's opinions that basically say, in order for there to be a quorum for purposes of holding a meeting, there have to be at least the number necessary to establish a quorum in seats in the, in the meeting room. So you can't have, for instance, three or four different people coming in by Skype. There would physically have to be three people in this room in order to have a council meeting.
Thank you. I was going around here, Charles.
Charles Hinton, living in the city. Now, I don't know whether, whether Colonel Billman, when he was campaigning for this, campaigned on the basis that I would be able to be at the meetings 80% of the time, or whatever that might be. that might be. Mrs. Denon had something on this issue in her presentation on this that I, that I read, and I think it was about something that had to come in to do with sunshine law, of where it said that it was appropriate for people to have electronic attendance, and at several places it said boards. Now, boards may have many more members on it than just, just five. When, when I thought about this, I tried to visualize in my mind whether or not the county commission would be agreeable to doing this kind of thing, where there was four people there and another person there with sort of intermittent attendance or contact. And I don't think that we're any rest a body because we're Satellite Beach Council as the city, the county commission. As a point of compromise, I could very well say, well, this issue hasn't come up before. Colonel Billman might be grandfathered in for this, and then it would be a, something that would be, be in the future, where a person who's going to run for this has got to decide, do I have the time to do this job properly? And I've been, I've been here where he was on a cell phone, and, and I felt that that was a very difficult participation at that time. And I also know that in congested airspace, a pilot needs to have his full attention directed in flying the airplane, rather, rather than talking on, on a cell phone to, to the council, whether it be.
Charlie, to put your, to put your concern and rest there, I don't do it from the cockpit, only from a hotel room or my car.
Thank you again, Don McLunden, citizen, Satellite Beach. This is interesting, where this discussion started again. We talked Attorney General opinions, and all of a sudden we talk law, and I found 10 Attorney General opinions that say this, and then I found two over here that said this. Well, as any good attorney knows, we can go out and seek, find whatever case law we want to, to enhance our opinion, and that's my opinion. I'm not an attorney. We started this meeting tonight with a great-looking group of people, some older than I, which gave me a lot of admiration, they're teaching computer classes to other people. We had talked here in the last year about technology, improvements in efficiency using Some of the facts that were, our statements that were made here tonight, I agree with, some I don't, by all of the parties. I personally prefer face-to-face meetings. There's nothing like looking these folks in the eye. You folks out there too. Here's another, another example of technology in use. This chamber was about half of what it was earlier, as I mentioned, that would probably happen, but I would bet, I know it's a lot of new faces that are here tonight, and I would bet, or I would wager, that a lot of those new faces utilize this new technology to attend, to attend meetings over and over and over again, and to dissect things that were said or done by either citizens or people running for council, and form their election directions from it. Now, to the issue of Skyping in. I've attended meetings where the Skype contacts were excellent. The boy, I'm hard of hearing, as I've said, I could hear it plain and clear. I've attended other meetings where they were horrible. In those meetings, those particular meetings, it's totally useless to have that person on the phone if the connection is dropping, we can't participate in the conversation, that's just the fact of the technology that's being used at that moment. And it might just have to be said by the chair that, you know, councilman, the connection keeps dropping, and we need to move forward, and unless you can attain a better connection, you're not part of the discussion. I, I just really feel that there are ways to do this. My daughter, she devotes about 99% of her job, she's a marketing director for clinical trials for them. 99% is teleconferencing, she attends a board meeting to the company, it's all done by teleconference.
Thank you. I'll swing back around here.
This is an interesting discussion here, but when I hear loss of connection, unable to do multiple screens, those are technological issues that I'm surprised the city has not addressed during this past year to facilitate this, or perhaps there should be a test run on Skype or another means to do it. I don't buy those as excuses. I have an auditor Attorney General's opinion, and I discussed this with the Attorney General's office, and I was led to believe that the AGO issued its last opinion in 2003 related to decide him. They do look at the Florida statutes, they do have opinions on this, but what I find interesting here is that they talk about absent numbers by telephone conference or other interactive electronic technology permissible in such absences due to extraordinary circumstances, such as illness. That is an example from what I understand. Are we going to determine what an illness is now, also at the next go-round? Is a tonsillectomy, or eye surgery, or cataract surgery going to be excluded, or some, I've got the flu, I need to attend? Then I go to the last part of this, and it is agreed that there does need to be a quorum here. Whether the absence of a member due to a scheduling conflict constitutes such a circumstance is a determination that must be made in the good judgment of the board. Good judgment, reasonableness. We do live in an electronic age. I understand tradition. I came to the 21st century six months ago, two years too late. My point is, let's move forward with this. And a person Skyping in, maybe there's another means to do this. I will flat-out state that this is not following the path of reason, justice, and truth. Thank you.
Swing back around.
John Fergus, 135, Maple. The opinion is AGO 200341, and it states, and I quote, "only in extraordinary circumstances." Sounds to me like once a year might fit that, maybe. Once a month certainly doesn't. And then they do have examples such as illness. And then it says, again, as was mentioned, whether the absence of a member is due to a scheduling conflict, and I emphasize that, constitutes such a circumstance is a determination that must be made in the good judgment of the board. This council, not once, to my knowledge, in the past year, has made a determination that this was a good idea or not. That would appear to be the reason to put this into the rules, so everybody knows what the rules are before they get called out on it. Otherwise, each time somebody has a scheduling conflict that Skypes in, is this determination that it was in the good judgment of the board, in the good judgment of the board, does that occur before the fact or after the fact? And if it's after the fact, does that mean the person gets docked and said they're not here when they Skyped in? Or do you have to call special meetings before the meeting to determine as a board whether this is appropriate or not? Again, the point is, and there's another statement that's made in here, about this policy, "to conclude otherwise would alter the intent and purpose of such a statute or rule." And the statute or rule has to do with having a quorum and having a full body physically present when something's being done. You don't see members of the state legislature Skyping in, you don't see members of the county Skyping in. The state legislature has not seen fit to address this issue since 2003, apparently. As such, despite what's happened with technology, it appears that they still like to have the warm bodies in the chairs, in the room, when a meeting takes place.
Andy Grun, president. First of all, legislatures have proxies, so when the vote takes place, they don't have to physically be there if they have directed their colleagues to act in their stead. I believe the council right now is looking at the wrong questions. The questions are, can we effectively conduct business, and are we making sure that everybody has an opportunity to be a part of the process? If a councilperson, and furthermore, to back up a little bit, in this most recent election, I was amazed at the rhetoric of all of the candidates, because all of them spoke about duty. All of them spoke about commitment to the city. They viewed, including you, viewed your role as a candidate, and then as an elected member of the council, as a humbling experience to which you are executing a duty. So the idea that a councilperson would say, I don't want to go to a meeting tonight because the Dolphins are gone, I don't think that that is an argument that will likely meet the light of day, because the amount of work it takes for you to do this job, the amount of work it takes for you to get elected to this job, so I think we're talking about a caliber of people that is a little bit above a guy who's just got extra sick days on the books. If a councilperson who does this out of a sense of duty is forced by circumstances, professional, familial, or otherwise, to be elsewhere on the night of a regularly scheduled meeting, and there is the three out of five physical quorum to hold that regularly, if that councilperson can hear what is being said in the meeting, can speak to the body and everybody in attendance, and has access to the information that was provided to the council people so that he can render, he or she can render an informed decision, then business is being conducted. To turn it into longstanding traditions, Ms. Gott, with all due respect, traditions change over time, especially those traditions that came out of the lack of technological advancement. So over time, these things are going to change. To put it to the idea of, we have to be here, you have to be here, I don't really think that there has been a single meeting that Councilman Billman has missed by choice. It has been balancing all of the very important responsibilities that he has taken on in his life, some of them professional, some of them civic. So the idea would be to have words that talk about what is attendance of a meeting. Yes, you need three out of five butts in seats for a physical quorum, but the idea that a person can't speakerphone in, Skype in, cellphone on speakerphone in, I think is a little short-sighted, so you may want to consider that. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Alice Walden, I'm a Satellite Beach resident. In addition to all the issues, pro and con here, and I agree with Ms. Green behind me, if you're going to change the rules in midstream, you should make the rules effective later. There's another issue facing this city that's been on my heart for some time, and that's the unity of the city. The unity of the citizens, and there, there's no one here that's not prideful about being a Satellite Beach resident, but I think that the, the, the timing, the tone of the, these resolutions do not, in my mind, promote unity within the city, they are promoting divisiveness. And I would like for you to consider those, that consideration as well in, in making your determination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gay pie, citizen. Mr. Chairman, when you declared yourself for the division of mayor, if you're going to run for mayor, one of the questions I asked you, if you would be able to fulfill your job and attend all the meetings, or at least the majority of them. You told me if you would, I told you that I would not vote for you if you could not perform your functions and be here at the meetings. I know you used to travel a lot, and that's why I based my decision on. I personally think there's two reasons that I would like to see Mr. Billman sitting in that seat. Number one, I want to see his body language, I want to see the whole council, when a subject comes up on what's going on, what their facial expressions are, and what their body language is. I can't do that with a Skype. I'm over here, I'm over there, I'm over here, I'm over there. Okay? My problem is hearing impairment, and although I will very admittedly admit, when you're when, when you're on Skypes, the acoustic, not the acoustic, but I, I hear better. I hear better on the speaker than I do actually in here. In here, if I get 70%, I'm lucky, the less rest I pick up through lip reading. That's another difficulty, I can't read his lips and watch what you guys are doing over here. So I would rather see him over here. I don't have any problems with him being in a chair, he's done some things that I disagree with, a lot of things that I disagree with, and a couple of things that I do agree with. At any rate, I want to see him in that chair. Thank you.
Dominic Montanaro, resident. Yeah, I've heard a lot of comments here tonight about who's got power, being decisiveness, and I want to go back and I want to look at what's happened over the last couple of years. Three days after Bill Higginson died, a person was put in a seat, and that created the same scenarios of power that they're accusing this new council of having. But let's get to the reality of what this is about. When we were talking about the doc issue, somebody in the back said, buyer, let the buyer beware. That was a statement I heard. And the reality is, let the buyer beware. These policies were in place when you were elected. You knew that you had X number of times to miss a meeting. You came in under those conditions. You came in under those conditions. And as Ms. Gott said, the policy is pretty liberal. And when you came into this position, you knew you had to be here. And I can tell you from sitting here for seven years, you're not able to see the people's faces from Skype. All they can do is see your face. You're not hearing the emotion when they get up and speak, you're not seeing their face, you're not seeing when those doors are open and there's 70 people outside, sitting out there. And that's the reality, and that's what's the difference of being here and not being here. And people elected you to be here, not to be... People elected you to be here, not to be somewhere else. And I think I heard comments about people being disenfranchised if something happened. Well, I also look at it from the point of view that there was a lot of misinformation going on in that timeframe when you were elected, and it's probably the reason why the other two people that ran this year aren't here.
One more? Yes, sir.
Patrick Mokady, Satellite Beach. This is really extremely confusing to me because I hear about traditions. Now, first of all, I've only owned property here for a few years, but my tax dollars are the same. In fact, my house isn't homesteaded, so I'm paying a good fair share myself. And as far as the traditions go, as far as myself in the meetings, the established policy and the tradition I'm used to is the ability of my councilman to Skype in. Why has it become an issue now? If there was a problem with this, why wasn't these issues raised prior to the elections? For me, I've heard a lot of speaking in regards to just an effort to silence the opposition. Just the thought of that by anybody here, hopefully, the councilwoman would consider withdrawing this portion. Because there was quite a bit of opposition to it. And where he has been doing it, again, why change it now? Why break tradition?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. One more?
Floyd Denny, resident, 40 years. I only became this in the last couple of years in the council when I found out how darn much money we owe. I'm just, I was just absolutely flabbergasted. And we put all this time and effort and energy on something like this instead of talking about what, how we're going down the drain. It's just crazy to me, absolutely crazy.
Thank you. No further comment? Bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to address that last comment. This city is not going down the drain. There was a lot of misinformation that was put out. Don't say no to me, Doug. There's a lot of misinformation that was put out about the city debt, and I'm not going to sit here now as a member of this council and let those myths be perpetrated and perpetuated. This needs to stop. This city has been well-run and well-managed, and that remains so.
Can I address that?
No, sir. Sorry, hon. She's on the floor. Okay, bring it back to council. For the council?
Yeah, let me, I want to address what Ms. Gott just addressed. I'm holding my man. No, wait, wait, wait. I'm going to go through the city's debt. So we can, no, 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 we're on... So she can say what she said, and I can counter her. Comment that someone made an address to her. We're going to, I want to stay on task here. Okay? Thank you. Section three, we're on section three. And comment on any items? Here's, I've always had, I don't like it because I don't think it's very technically improved yet. It's getting better. But I also always had a hard time when we created a new law ordinance, and all the people who came under the old one was now all of a sudden illegal. So I have an issue there. When Mr. Billman ran, and people ran for council who were already on it, there was a set of rules, and they allowed them to Skype. So we're coming in and saying, "No Skyping." To me, it's after the fact. Now, I don't like it, and I wish there was a more compromise. I want you here. I mean, this is an issue that I'd like you here from the standpoint that we can have good conversations to get government here. Well, enough of the time physically here. I mean, I'm just saying that to you. I know when people asked me when I was running, did I have the time to be here and put the effort in? And I had to make a decision to change some of my ways in my travel because I thought, my own personal opinion, that I needed to physically be here. My opinion. But I have a hard time changing it in midstream for some reason. I really don't like it, but I have a hard time changing the law in midstream. Because it wasn't, or it does not seem to be, illegal now. Question asking, but does any other council in the county use Skyping that we know of? Do you have a idea? I have no idea.
Yeah, I understand. West Melbourne is going through an issue with a councilmember now, pushing the limits and causing quite a bit of controversy there.
But my concern is, is there a limit to the laws that we have right now in council that I was elected under, Mark, you, Councilman Billman was elected under? That's where I have the problem. We can establish them from here forward, but I have a hard time, only from the fact that he came under council with a set of rules. According to Mr. Montanaro, there was, and according to Ms. Gott, there was. I mean, if you look at the Attorney General's opinion, some people are interpreting it that way. I didn't, okay, when I ran. I knew I was going to be gone, but I interpreted, I would have, I thought that an employment situation was a good enough reason to Skype in, to be, and we could use electronic media to attend the council meeting. I understand the issues with facial expressions and that sort of thing. But, you know, we're in the 21st century. My thing is this, I really like to have the council together as a unit. That, to me, is important. If you never attend, and there's no limit to it, then we never see you. And if you tell me it's going to keep continually getting worse, that you are not going to be able to attend, how much is that? Is that every single meeting? I mean, I don't know. I think, to me, there's some kind of unity we need here. I don't want to censor you by any, not you, and I apologize because it shouldn't be happening to any of us. It could happen to any of us. And our jobs change and so forth. So I have trouble putting it on anybody, changing the rules in the midstream. That's, I don't like it, but I don't like the rules changed in midstream for people. But I can tell you that I really don't like the thing clicking off. If it clicks off many times, if I'm allowed as chair, I'm not going to click it back on if it continually messes up. I mean, it does disrupt the meetings. So, you know, I, I don't like it. I would rather put a number on that we could each use for a year until this becomes better technology. But I have a hard time coming in and going, "You're under these set of rules, we're going to change it in midstream." That's my only concern. There's a way to work out an agreement between us, I'm all for it. I don't like it, but I just, I remembered voting on something on council a long time about recreation vehicles in people's yards. Well, people bought the houses and knew they could put them there. And then we changed the rules on them, which I wanted to grandfather those people because I thought you came and bought your house under a certain set of rules. And we ran on council under rules that were here. Maybe I didn't like them, but that's the rules there. So I don't like it at all. I'm willing to work with it, but I don't see how you can cut it totally off once the precedent was started.
I'm willing to grandfather Councilman Billman. I would like to see the practice discontinued with the sole exception of this grandfathering. But I want Councilman Billman to concede that he is now aware that it is disruptive when he Skypes in or phones in, and that he will keep those absences to an absolute minimum.
And, you know, Marina, I appreciate, just direct it, if you would, not to just Mr. Billman, but the council members as a whole.
Well, he's the one being grandfathered, so, I mean, this is, this is the way I'm willing to, to change this. I mean, we've got to work both ways on this.
That's, that's why... Well, it's good for me, obviously. And, believe me, I don't want to be a... That's no fun. But my whole point is that by limiting a person's ability to Skype in, it's not just me, it's people in the future who, and guess what? Technology's only going to get better. But what we're doing is, we're limiting the capability of somebody who travels for a living, serving the city. And guess what? He's traveling for a reason. He's traveling for employment so he can make money to pay the taxes in this city.
When technology gets better, we can readdress this. But technology is not better now, and it, I would like to see it not be the practice of this council to have people attending electronically, except in extraordinary circumstances of illness, medical problems, et cetera, spelled out here. In addition, part of that compromise for me would be that the chair will have the discretion to decide when there will be no more reconnecting the dropped connections.
And hopefully, the new system here is a plus. Would you agree with that? Yeah, that's fine. All right. Okay. So if, let's say, I mean, because I can't control, or whoever's going to be out there can't control the Skype connection. We'll make the best effort to... Right. So we make the best effort, and if you say, or we're knocking you off, does that now mean that I've missed that meeting? Good question. If you're here during the, my feeling would be, Jim, you have to, correct. If you're here at the start of the meeting, and that's, connection works, I think your intent was to be here. Is that, Jim?
Normally, you do it based on when you, you know, a lot of meetings, they take role when you start a meeting, see whether you're present or not. We don't do that, but if you're here that way, then it's a permissible meeting.
I would rather use a computer, sit up over there if we could, that way in cases we need the screen.
I'm not the IT guy, do whatever you think that...
And I just wanted to suggest that we are changing with Bright House the network connections that we have and so on. And this can, I would think, improve, you know, how we've been doing this. So I, you know, I'll check with Adam if it's council's wishes to see if we can have some improvements in that area for clarity and not dropping it and so on.
Okay.
Are we all right then on D, C?
Are we all right on? D, I have one I'd like to change the dates.
Okay.
Okay. Well, how's she going to read now?
Just a sentence provided by the current council member, any council member currently attending in this matter, who has currently attended in this matter, has grandfathered him.
But again, that limits anybody in the future.
That's correct.
If we can readdress, that could be readdressed like anything else on policies and procedures. Technology gets better, it comes about, it can be addressed again. We can address it in six months. Well, it, I don't think I'd be, it's something that can always be done, it's an open-ended party, it can always be. As we're addressing it now, the next council can come in and they can address the issue. This council can bring it up again, and any member on this council can bring this up again to do it. There's nothing saying you can't. Is that sufficient with you, Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to number D, council attire and, I would like to see it April through September because it gets hot in April, and I can tell you September's pretty darn hot.
I would want right now.
Me too. Yep. Now, I would like to look good, but, yeah. My thing is, is April through September, you know, coat and tie is fine with me.
The reason that August is there, September is the month in which the budget is adopted, and it is considered appropriate attire for councilmembers to be basically, shall we say, dressed up when their budget is presented and discussed and passed.
I think that would, again...
And that's the, that is what has been the tradition in this city.
Yeah. I just think it's, it's hot in this council chamber. I think you can still look very well-dressed and not have a tie. There's a lot of nice suits out there, that, the turtleneck or something of that nature. That was good. And it's just awful hot during that time of year. And I, I know myself, I'm going to be appropriately dressed. I don't think anybody else on council that I know that is not going to be, just give you a little bit more, it is hot during that time of year.
I agree. So, somebody's the councilman.
My thing is April to September, but I can just throw it out there for dates.
Yeah, that's fine.
I agree.
All right. Okay. E, no change there regarding workshop meetings. Are we okay with that?
Yep.
F, no change there regarding public hearings. Are we okay there?
Yep.
G, setting the agenda, no change in these. Number three, it's called emergency items. I would actually like to change that heading to time-sensitive items because something can be time-sensitive, that being an emergency. And so I'd just be changing the heading there to time-sensitive, and then insert time-sensitive item where I have it inserted.
Okay.
H, conduct of meetings, this is all the same as is currently in the procedures. I did add, because this was not in there, and this adds clarification on 2A, the chair introduces agenda item and calls on staff or other appropriate person to provide background information. That's the practice that's done, it just wasn't stated. Okay? And then the rest of that is the same as currently happens. Are we okay with H? I, voting procedures, the same as we have now. Are we okay with that?
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. Any other comment on that stuff?
That's three, second three.
That's three. Okay.
Let's go. Kathy Nakarola, Saturday Beach resident. Thank you, guys, on number C for allowing Mr. Billman to Skype in. I appreciate that. I don't often come up here and say, "Thank you," but thank you. And D, I think if the boys have to wear ties, then the ladies have to wear those nasty hot pantyhose and pumps. Think about it. I don't mind you guys even just having the Satellite Beach T-shirts. We don't care what you look like, and everybody's always dressed nice. I really don't even know why you're putting restrictions on ties for yourself.
No, well, we didn't let them have them.
Mark, excuse me. I mean, I don't know why you're putting restrictions on ties. Is that, is that really important? None of you need to ever wear ties. Because we're trying to be relaxed and a casual, you know, you know, and we see you all bound up with ties and suits and everything else, it doesn't help. I mean, I don't, I can work around that, but some people, it confines them. So if you're relaxed and in clean dress and feeling comfortable, guess what? We are too. You don't see us getting dressed up.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number four.
Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. Moving on to number four.
I want to make comment about women appearing in heels. I wish that I had the day back when I could wear heels and not have to be confined flat shoes and a cane.
I haven't worn pantyhose in 25 years now, I never go back to it.
Section four, citizens' rights to be heard, this is the same. Basically, as was there, who shall be heard, that's all the same.
Okay.
And one and two, are we okay with that?
Yep.
B, speakers' documentation for council. I added the sentence, in addition, speakers may provide documentation when they address the council, because that's actually what they do now. It just, the way it was worded, it made it look like they had to turn in stuff prior to, so I made it both ways. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
C is opportunities to address the council. First is citizen comments, agenda item. C is opportunities to address the council. First is citizen comments, agenda item, and that's all the same as is currently in the council policies and procedures. Are we okay with that? Item two is other agenda items, that's the same procedure that's being followed now in the policies and procedures. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
D is procedures for addressing, for citizens addressing council. Number one is the same. Are we okay?
Yes.
Two is the same. Are we okay? Number three, I would, I would just like to add a couple of words here for clarification. Follow me on this sentence. Speakers shall be limited to five minutes for the citizen comments, agenda item, and three minutes for all other agenda items. Are we okay with that? That's the common practice.
Yes.
Okay, four is the same, except I did add, since we're now on the internet, I did say, state their name and address, four city of residents, which is the practice that's ongoing now. Are we okay with four?
Yes.
Number five is the same. Are we okay? Number six is the same, except adding that council members shall not make retorts to or about speakers during any citizen comment portions of a meeting, which means that citizens have the right to speak uninterrupted, basically. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Seven, uh, speakers shall confine comments to the issue and I struck and are encouraged to, and just say, and avoid negative comments of a personal nature. And then whenever any speaker makes a factually incorrect statement about the city or city employee, the city manager should provide the correct information at the close of citizen comments. I think that this is absolutely essential, that this be added. I've been down this road before. When misstatements of fact are made and they are repeated and repeated and repeated and nobody up here gives, corrects the record, then that becomes truth in the public's mind. It is our responsibility to make sure that only factual information comes out of this council chambers. Are we okay with seven?
Yes.
Number eight, I just added to contact city hall for procedure information on how to make a complaint against a city employee. And then the last sentence, no complaints about city employees, including the city manager, will be heard unless these procedures have been followed. It's giving every employee the same protection, basically. And then number nine, I added with the consent of council, when the audience is small, the chair may do this, and the reason I added that was because by opening up a two-way dialogue, that can conceivably take up a lot more time and other council members may have counted on being out, you know, without that additional time added on. So, I added with the consent of council, which is very common for any time the chair wants to do something out of the norm, is with the consent of council. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
And then procedures for dealing with people who disrupt meetings, that's all the language in the current couns, uh, council policies and procedures with a direct quote of the city code that deals with how they would be dealt with. Are we okay with that?
Yes. Now, I have, there's two more items we need to add to it. Let me open it up, let me finish these two if you don't mind, and then we'll open it up for comments. Councilman Dean has asked, agendas shall be delivered to the city council no later than seven days prior to the meeting.
That doesn't fit here.
It's part, and it's not part of the policies and procedures?
No, this is not part of section four.
Okay, then what section are we going to put it in? We only have two items left there, so rather than.
We may only have two items left.
On that.
Like citizens' comments on section four.
Okay, and I was going to add these two.
But they're not related to people addressing the council.
Again, all right, on section four, open up the council, I mean, citizens' comments.
Kathy Arcarola, South Atlantic resident, I, I, Mr. Catina, since you hold the floor and you're the mayor, if there's something that you want to do, I don't know why you're letting the other council person put heat on you.
On this, on, on.
On this, is there a spot on here where we come up to speak, we give our little passionate thing, we go back and sit down, and then one of the council members decides to give a little jab out, but yet we're not allowed to get back up again. So, I haven't seen that happen that much, but I've seen it happen tonight a few times. So, is there anything in here that prohibits council from being derogatory back to a speaker or their thought process? And, you know, that's kind of a lash out, and I haven't typically seen that, but I'm seeing it a lot tonight.
Thank you.
If you could, I'm glad you found that funny, Marine.
Thank you. I thought I'd hand the back, Steve, then I think Don.
Steve Hedley, president, haven't moved since the back. Um, I have one of the dumbest questions in the world. Who defines what's obscene? And you know where I'm going with that, don't you? Who defines, I mean, I mean, my mom thinks HE double hockey sticks is obscene, you know?
Why do you, why do you ask?
Is that on?
Because.
It doesn't, is it has to do with?
Oh, yeah.
Section four?
Yeah, it's in there.
It's not in there.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It is. Where?
Uh, section under 10, section 2-49A.
Oh, that's in the code, that's in the city code.
And I'm asking who defines that? Thank you.
Because the council will be the one that would make that determination. I, I saw one more hand up, Don.
I'm McLendon, citizen, Satellite Beach, on, I think it's section C, citizen comments and agenda comments, the timing. We've had this five-minute limitation on citizen comments, agenda item, and we've limited comments during an agenda item to three minutes from citizens. That has fluctuated over a year somewhat, depending. I would really like to see a reversal of that. Now, I understand, here we are, and you, Mr. Mayor, had spoke of ending Sunday evening earlier, and we do have a heavy agenda tonight in citizen comments, though. You folks obviously are listening to what the citizens have to say. And, yeah, should you be able to say it in three minutes? Well, we, we try, but as the former mayor knows well, I think I've held down many times for exceeding that limit. But I would, I would like to see maybe just bumping that to four, maybe reducing the, the citizen comments portion to three, maybe give us four minutes for agenda items. Because I, I mean, I'm seeing, I'm seeing give and take here on very hard and fast changes to procedures, and I'm seeing dialogue. We're, we're all forming opinions and, and our opinions continue to, to, to grow and change as we hear more dialogue. And I don't, I don't want to be here, be there to make it tonight, but I don't want to be here midnight either, but I'd ask your consideration. I know there is an exemption, but I ask you to consider that at times also.
Okay, thank you.
Charles Hitman, I'm a citizen. I like to speak in the bubble about, I am, I am against people wasting their time when they come up here and they all congratulate you on various things, and I kind of mistake myself. What's, what's his, what's his status to congratulate you? So, so people use up a lot of their time down here in entities that don't need to be said. And I think if a person is organized, when he knows what he's going to say, he can say it. I'm, I'm against people who are, who are able to stake at length and stretch the meetings out when they don't know when they've already made their point.
Thank you. No other comments, close it, go back to council. At this time, I'm going to bring Cheryl's two items in.
We can't act on those.
Can I?
No.
Can we discuss and act on them on the next meeting? Because isn't that how it shows?
Yeah, come up for the next meeting.
I'm not even sure where they fit in. It says H, but H in what?
Let me, um.
It says H.
That, that's all we received.
Right. The only H I see is, the word would fit in, is H under conduct of meetings, but I don't think it applies to that.
Why not? Let me find where it says.
I think that was setting the agenda, number one, agenda, or number, interesting, for number three, under H, I believe she would put, agenda shall be delivered to the city council no later than seven days prior to the meeting on which the agenda will be presented.
So, under conduct of meetings.
So, would be, no, it would be, it would be under section 2H, setting the agenda. And there are two items there now. I believe she's suggesting we add a third item. Okay?
Well, let's just discuss the merits.
Right, that's something that, because the way it's read, we have to discuss it. At least if we discuss it at this meeting, we can vote the next meeting. Okay? To me, five days, if I get a packet on Friday, that gives me plenty of time, and it's also has to deal with staff, the amount of time they have to put into this. I have no problem getting a, a packet on a Friday, reading it over the weekend, calling the city manager as I do on Mondays, discussing with her. I think it gives the staff more time to prepare.
Mm-hmm. I agree. I, I would not be in favor of her first one.
Um, number four, minutes shall be presented for approval at the meeting neck, at the meeting neck, typed here wrong, at the meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah. Proceeding to meeting in which the minutes were taken, and will include, as part of the agenda packet, and shall be approved prior to proceeding with council business.
I would not be in favor of that. This is putting another, more requirements on our.
Yeah, it's too tight, sorry. That's too tight on the scale.
And, you know, we are blessed with having staff who don't need to be told to work as fast as they can, and if they could have them for us immediately, they would. Sometimes other priorities come up, and I think that it has to be left to the staff to determine, you know, what priorities in their workload are.
That's, I think there should be some limit, however. I, I agree that maybe the next meeting's not the right one, but maybe we say two meetings, within two meetings. Because they're, they're not very helpful when they go much longer than that, if you have to refer back from for something.
Can we just make our wishes known to the staff that we would like to have a thoughtful, the minutes the staff could be took? I think they would watch it out, be fine, that's just, a few minutes.
I would not be willing to put it, cast it in stone. It's just another deadline that, that they may not be able to meet in spite of their best efforts.
Is it, does anybody see it as a major problem? I, I just don't see it as a huge problem, I know. You as a major problem?
I have not, I'm not.
But let's just see how it goes and then we, if it is a problem.
No, I agree.
If it's not a problem, let's move on. Hearing no discussion on this now. Counsel.
We're not going to ask for public comments on that until, if that was.
Until the 19th, yes, it can't be. We'll discuss it on the 19th.
Well, actually, you, you, I think that you could get comments, but we can't vote on it until then. That's all, that's all the politics and procedures, so you can't vote on it.
Okay, I was going to take comments the next one that we could, but, all right, I'll open it up to the floor for comments on the two items that Councilman Dean, Dean, excuse me, proposed. Ron Trigut, Satellite Beach resident. I'm not going to get into why the minutes are needed. It is obvious that they are needed. I understand staff's issues, but when some of these items come up from a prior meeting, especially when they're two weeks apart, it sure would be nice to look at the minutes. And this is perhaps something many governments need to address going forward and follow the private sector on how they do things in board meetings. Just a suggestion, and I truly understand staff's issue here. Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none, go back to council.
Okay, then, then what I will do is very quickly go through this and review what's been done, and then I will make a motion.
Okay.
Okay? Everything was okay on, in section one, as presented with the changes that I added when we went through this. On number, on section two, um, I'm tired. A, part A, the blank space is there in terms of what governing documents will be included, that will be filled in as I work with Lenore in coming up with those. For now, B will not be included. The, the issue is still pending a city attorney's opinion regarding this item, so for now it will not be included. C and D will be. Then going on to section three, the two changes were in paragraph C, a sentence will be added in there about grandfathering the current person who, who attends electronically. Excuse me. And the rest will remain the same in that paragraph, and in count, and in paragraph D, the months will be changed, casual will go from April through September, and business will go from October through March. And then on the next page, setting the agenda, I made that one change, time-sensitive. And on the bottom of section four, I made a notation there, changing a couple of words, which you all approved. And so with those changes, I move that we adopt the council policies and procedures as amended here tonight.
Have a motion by, second by Councilman Goddard, second by Councilman Breimer. Hearing no more further discussion, Lenore.
Okay, Councilmember Billman?
Yes.
Councilmember Breimer?
Yes.
Councilmember Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes. Passes. Thank you, thank you, audience, for the input. I know it was incredibly long, but thank you, appreciate it. I think we can get through these other ones pretty quickly. Pardon? Okay. Saving time, everybody. Counsel, okay to move forward, no break, thank you. Okay, agenda item number 12, disband KPEG, cancel study in dog park, cause their examination of the city operation is finished.
I move that KPEG be disbanded and that any studies that have been scheduled for dog and skate parks be discontinued.
Second, have a motion by Councilman Gott, a second by Councilman Breimer. Discussion? Yeah, I think some form of the KPEG, some form of citizens advisory panel to continue to look for efficiencies should be maintained. As, in this case, it's an ad hoc, which has a specific time and duty. So, as a council, if we're that, then I think if we, as a council decides that's the route, then maybe it's a formation of another board only from the fact that this has a specific duty to do for a specific time, an ad hoc committee.
Well, I'd have to get back in and look at the verbiage that, when we stood up the KPEG, but I could have sworn that we discussed that it would be a standing committee to continually give.
If it's an ad hoc committee, saying ad hoc committees have a specific time and duty, and once that's reached, that their business is done. It's not saying we can't come back and do it, but I'm saying that's what an ad hoc committee is. And we've had them, you know, we've had the right sizing committee, we've had the blue ribbon committee, we've had.
Right, I know.
We've had a lot of these, and I think they're very good.
But, but what I'm saying is, is with this particular one, with KPEG, we specifically, at least I remember specifically discussing this being a standing committee that would continually review efficiencies. I mean, let's, we're going to have to talk to folks who, who did it. Where's Andy?
Well, my motion envisions either standing or ad hoc. And, may I, Mr. Mayor?
May I?
One of the good things that came out of the past year was a, an emphasis on looking for efficiencies, cutting costs, boosting productivity wherever possible, and doing the two simultaneously. And in going around and talking to each of the department heads, I am convinced that that mentality has been ingrained in them and willingly so, and I think that they intend to keep that practice up and to keep working in that manner. and to keep working in that manner. I think that the time for outsiders coming in and looking over their shoulder and taking up more time, studying, analyzing and so forth, for now, is over. They need to be allowed to take what they have learned and achieved this year and get back to work making those things happen.
And that's why I think its usefulness is over for this time.
Yeah. The thought process was that the first year to do exactly what Ms. Gott is saying was a very high-intensity effort that we worked with the department heads. The thought process for the continuation of this was a much more relaxed, at the wishes of the department head, bring in the folks who had become smart about working with the department and look for other efficiencies throughout the year. That's what I, that's the way I envision the KPEG being maintained. If we want to look at that for maybe, you know, if we want to have a discussion at some later date and stand up a, you know, a, some sort of a group of folks who had become familiar with the way that the departments are run for further help with the department heads, then I guess I'd be up for that.
Open it up, any further comment, counsel? Open it up to citizens' comments?
I would just suggest that you have two reports before you, two very diverse reports from the blue ribbon and from KPEG, put together by a diverse group of citizens. You have a lot of meat to chew on in those reports. You probably don't need another report until you digest all that.
Thank you.
I'm McLennan, citizen. I'm not really going to speak too much to KPEG. I think that's out in the conversation. There's two issues on the agenda item in the summary and explanation. So the Dog Park Skate Park have previously been assessed and discussed regarding personal liability and issues as well as reducing cost of skate park, past per city liability insurance is required to be staffed. I mentioned earlier that we were fortunate, or unfortunate in being over in Brady King for a celebration of their Renaissance River Walk. And one of the focal points of that River Walk is what is one of the, already known as one of the finest skate parks in the state and that will attract a lot of big-time competition. The skateboard group didn't like the original plans. They came to the council over there, they got involved. Council listened to their suggestions. They got new architects in. They put a skate park in. They're going to bring in nationwide competitions and whatnot, which is going to, again, elevate that city's visibility. It's good for the city, looks good. Interesting thing is that skate park is not banned. It's open 24 hours a day. There are no rules. And there are no fences. Talk to the city clerk over there today. Is there any fees for using that park? He answered, "No." Now, this summary says our skate park, the city's liability insurance is required for it to be staffed. Okay, I would, I don't know what their insurance over there is. I didn't ask that question. But I think it's something that we could look at. We're not talking a lot of money. When it comes to the Dog Park, there again, we were at Fort DeSoto and they've got one of the most incredible dog parks that I've ever been to. It's got three rules. You go in. All dogs must be under voice restraint at all times. Dog owners are responsible for collecting and removing their dog's waste. Dog owners are responsible for their dog's behavior at all times. And what has happened at our skate park is one individual dog bit somebody right after it opened. I don't know if that has anything to do with our liabilities there. But nevertheless, that park over there is working fine. And the other one is, we're spending $2,500 a year on dog poo poo bags. Fort DeSoto has a big sign up, dog bags, and they're everywhere. Dog bags provided by friends of Fort DeSoto Dog Park. Donations appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank every Kathleen Saturday resident, Arcarola. I thank everybody for being here. I personally disappointed that I have sat here since seven o'clock diligently, especially coming to this meeting. Haven't been to the last few in hopes that Ms. Carrie Stones would be here for this agenda item because this falls under her direction. And I see that she bolted. So I would just like to make official on the comment that she should have stuck around for this because I would like for you guys and I would like to talk to her. Sorry, my first question is, why does it say KPEG canceled for dog and skate parks? But the KPEG was also for the budget, the departments, energy things. Why are we singling out the dog in this skate park no longer being a KPEG issue? Are we canceled, are you talking about all KPEG is gone?
No.
Well, you didn't say that. You said dog and skate parks.
Three things.
Three things. It's three things. This been KPEG.
Oh, I thought it was for the dog and skate park. I went through a lot of effort in this past six months getting information and I don't know if Frank, you or Mark or Lorraine got to... And I investigated all the dog parks, all the skate parks, staffing, non-staffing, poo poo bag prices, everything. I gave it to Ms. Carrie, I gave it to Ann. Ann got back to me on a few things. I never really heard much from Ms. Carrie about anything. But I am for the dog park, I am for the skate park. But in my research, I even found that we are the oldest dog park in Brevard County and we are the only one that is staffed. We pay a person to supervise adults that are 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80 years old to supervise their own dogs. Yeah, we don't have someone at the beach supervising a parent to supervise their kid in the water. I think it's excessive. I don't think it's necessary. I think $2.50 is a bit of a ripoff. I don't think we need to put out $4,000 worth of poopy bags when people could donate public's bags. I think we could save a lot of money here. We're not breaking even and we're not making anything, so why are we doing it this way if we don't have to? We're losing, I think, based on recollection, $6,000 a year on the dog park and $8,000 on the skate park. I would like someone to research a little bit better if we really do have to staff the skate park because like I said, no one else in Brevard County staffs them unless they're private. But at least at a minimum, I would hope that you guys would consider unlocking and unstaffing the dog park and seeing how that goes. I've had my dog been bitten a couple of times just in the neighborhood walking around and we worked it out with the people. I've had her bit outside the dog park and worked it out with that person who's a council member. So, you know, it's not uncommon for a dog to get bit by another dog. So, but I would like for you guys to look at that and I would like for Ms. Stones to get back with me about why we're still allowing dogs to be shampooed there, prices of bags, this and that. And, you know, I'm worried that if Ms. Ann is not here, I'll never get those answers for the last six months I've been meeting. And KPEG promised me that they would revisit this in a few months and get back with me. And now as a citizen, I'm getting nothing. Thank you.
I think it's an item, when you look at this, that it's a rec department that Ann could direct this to Carrie. There's a recreation board. And this is more towards a recreation board, I think, than it is towards a...
Well, there was a decision made by council, I don't know, it was a month ago or so, that we would revisit this in six months. So that's pretty much where it stood. But I've appreciated, we reduced the cost on the bags and the number of bags and we're looking at water usage and other issues too. But we are required at this point in time to continue with liability insurance, I mean, to have staffing because of the liability requirement on our insurance policy. So we are, we have been looking at this and I do appreciate the input.
You have my willing for the dog park?
No.
So I just would like to see, because we're budget issue, to look at the staffing for the dog park and the budget issue for the council.
Okay, thank you, there. Any other further public comment?
Gerald, I'm the resident. I don't have a dog, but I'm glad that we have a dog park for people who do have dogs and want to do that. I think it's one of the amenities of the city and I'm glad we've got it. My only concern about the dog park would be that, and the skate ramp would be that the city is protected in regard to insurance and whatever the insurance requirement says that we need to do, we need to do that. My principal concern, if you want to hear at this point, is KPEG. I went into the city documents and I read the KPEG authorization and it kind of shocked me a little bit because the people who were inspecting the various departments were, they had, they could talk to anybody just about any time and it specifically said that they were able to make tape recordings of individual questions and things like that. And my concern is that I've heard all the council members in the previous councils talk about the high level of quality that we have in our department heads. And I'm aware that previous city manager had taken steps two or three years ago to put into effect efficiencies and he had professional people managing these things. Now, this kind of offends me in the sense that people who I'm not sure have all the qualifications or the inspections they're trying to make are coming into something and they have to be sort of educated in regard to how things go. And unless they are a professional in that, I think that this is a disruption to our professional managers. I think that they don't need outsiders coming in, how to do their jobs or they don't, they shouldn't have to defend themselves because of the way they are doing them. And I think that KPEG has had its day and it's time that it be over.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cape High citizen. KPEG. I was against it when it started. I'm still against it. It needs to be disbanded. We no longer need, we never needed KPEG. We never needed KPEG. We have a city manager. We had a city manager, we still have an interim city manager, that started efficiency and looking at efficient way of doing things five years ago, six years ago. We did not need KPEG. We have department heads that should be required to look at the efficiencies of their departments. The city manager should also look at the deficiencies or the efficiencies of their department. Or any member, Mr. Chairman, if any member of council that owns businesses or runs businesses, do they designate somebody to tell them how to run their business? I think not. I think not. I ran a business with a span of control over close to 100 miles. My boss didn't tell me how to efficiently run my business. If I didn't run it right, he would say, hey, you got 90 days to get it right or you're out the door. He didn't send a committee down to tell me how to run my business. That's number one. So we didn't need KPEG in the first place. Now, let's talk about efficiency. Previous council and KPEG had a kind of a mindset on efficiency. Let's get rid of all our long-term employees that are high-paid now that worked 20 years or more to get there. Let's get rid of them and then that's what we call efficiency. Efficiency was a code word for getting rid of high-paid employees that given their loyalty for...
Correct it to me, Ann, I'm the senator.
I am.
Okay, thank you.
I am, I...
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I am. The code word was efficiency and it was to get rid of people that worked for us for 20, 24 years that worked their way up through the ranks and were getting pretty good salary. But they earned it. And now we're going to kick them out the door, say, four, five years before retirement. To me, that's not efficiency. They've given us their loyalty. We need, that, need to give them back the same loyalty. You've got to take care of your people and don't forget, you get what you paid for. It's just that simple. Get rid of KPEG, we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just point out that nobody lost their job because of KPEG and may I also point out that KPEG actually resulted in an additional 7% decrease in the operating budget requirement.
One more question?
Roger Goodus, resident Satellite Beach, former member of KPEG. As of, within the next hour, it was an ad hoc committee. I gave the final presentation. There were things that needed to be done further with it. I'm fine with this right now. There's a lot to absorb. Some of the comments I'm hearing, I think I'm going to go home and blow my duck call tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, please. Thank you.
Andy Grier, resident Satellite Beach and participant on the KPEG initiative. KPEG, not KPEG. Disbanded, whatever. But the essence of the study was intended to understand and communicate to everybody, this is what we're doing in our city. And to evaluate it with respect to understood standards. They could be labor statistics, they could be FBI crime statistics with regards to police departments. We looked at a lot of different things. And essentially what it was intended to do, and I think it accomplished the majority of its objective, which was to establish a baseline for how we're doing things and then identify potential areas that the department heads could consider in their future planning as well as to look at specific initiatives that might benefit the city in some small way. And we did that. There were 12 immediate items for consideration to which some of those items have been immediately adopted. There were 11 items in which, because of the time constraints, we clearly stated we have not had sufficient time to adequately discuss this effort and we suggest, suggest that it be considered for future initiatives. I believe that we have some of the best city employees anybody could ever ask for. The time that we worked with them was phenomenal. I hold them in the highest regard and the highest respect. But I also believe that citizen involvement to help us be better is a good thing. To ask critical questions. If someone doesn't understand why, to say, I see that you're doing this, but I don't understand why. If nothing else, it puts a department head in a position to reevaluate their decision-making processes because if they put into place a practice 10 years ago to solve a specific problem, that practice may continue on when today, maybe we should change it. Not that KPEG tells them to change it, but it gets them to discuss it openly and honestly. And if you noticed during the most recent budgeting session, all the department head came forward and said, we listened to KPEG, we adopted some of their ideas, but we also came up with some better ideas. So disband KPEG for what it was. Because the truth of the matter was, the way that it was structured with all of the public meetings and all of the constraints around it, it prevented a free exchange of information and open discussion and open dialogue. However, the idea of continuous improvement, the idea of citizen involvement, these are good things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney General, President. The idea of continued improvement lies with you. If you look at the amount of staff time that was spent on the blue ribbon committee and on the KPEG committee, it was hundreds of hours. And basically, the responsibility of the efficiencies lie with you and the department heads. You need to look at levels of service meetings where you sit down with the department heads. Because the reality is, through the blue ribbon committee and through KPEG, all of the other people knew more than you knew because they were at the meetings and you weren't. You need to get with the department heads yourself. We're in a scenario right now where we're at the... I mean, you have the most efficient departments running right now because they're a bare bone. The responsibility lies with you going forward. Have level of service meetings with the department heads and move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, bring it back to counsel. We have a motion on the floor by counsel and Gott, second by counsel and Breimer. Any further discussion from counsel? Lenore? One more.
Councilmember Vilma?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryneman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gott?
Yes.
Mary Katina?
Yes.
Agenda item passes. Moving on to agenda item number 13, to span Blue Ribbon Financial Budget Committee because their examination of the city operations is finished. May I just point out that on April the 4th, I moved, Councilman Higgins seconded to dissolve the Blue Ribbon Financial Budget Committee and it passed with all eye. It was already been done.
Okay, I thought that it was kept on. Oh, I'm, I'm, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on, agenda item number 14. Finally is agenda items for next council. And we have a proposed one here, let's see what else we need on it and what we can take off so it's not 11:30 because it looks like we're going to have some pretty good discussion on some of the stuff next week also. We have ordinance number 1064, second reading.
No, no, no. No.
No?
It's gone.
First, right, okay, excuse me. Yard setback, sorry. Personnel policy on number 1057. Okay. What, where's this? Did you get this sheet? Share it with me. Personnel policy.
Yes, that is the HR benefits coordinator for whom we have no current job classification. So, she was, Florence was hired, as I mentioned, last meeting and she was hired on October, I believe it was the 19th. So, we're, we're looking at crafting an ordinance. Yeah, HR benefits, human resources and benefits coordinator.
And, and what, what would this do?
Well, what this does is it establishes for, in the personnel policy, modifications, additions are made via ordinance. So, we must add this via ordinance.
But what are we adding?
We, we have no job classification. This, this entity, this job position, classification does not currently exist although we have hired someone.
What we're doing is we're changing the personnel policy to accommodate this.
Correct.
The personnel code?
Correct. Well, that's correct.
Okay. Agenda, also agenda item that has been asked to put on, an ordinance prepared by the city attorney to restore original CRA board composition, reestablish the CRA advisory committee, as asked and put on.
With a first reading on that ordinance?
All right. Is, at some point, does that, I mean, does that have to go through the CRA first?
No.
Does the CRA have anything to say about that?
Not, not, not what this is proposing. It's a city council action.
Agenda item pending council review, halt action involving the auditor selection committee. Is that something that has to be done at the next one?
Just so long as this doesn't, it's my understanding, nothing's been done on this now and I would like for it not to be done pending our opportunity to review what the issue is there and so forth.
Can, can we let that be at January? Everybody's that fine?
As long as it doesn't move forward in the meantime.
Okay. We had a member of that committee here. We can hear from him.
Yes, we do.
Committee member. Status of it. I was under the impression that nothing had been accomplished yet. So, please.
Can I send the, the city manager for the next meeting, propose a report that we are trying to go through?
Come up here, sir.
Please come to the podium.
May I suggest that at the next council meeting, I will be sending something as we discussed at the last audit committee meeting, that we will be providing city council with a small update on where we are with the committee. Unfortunately, we have a, our third meeting after the city council meeting, I believe it's the 22nd?
Seventeenth.
Oh, the 17th, I'm sorry. Then we'll bring an update with, with the last three meetings to city council and we were proposing to do that at the next meeting.
But see, this is my point. I don't know-
All I'm asking is, do you want this to be an agenda item?
Yeah.
Or the December 19th?
Yeah, I just would like the, the committee, all committee action to stop until we've had an opportunity to discuss this. And what's the purpose of the committee in the first place? Now, I'm not asking for an answer now, but that's why I don't want them going on and doing stuff when we don't even know what they're doing it for.
I think, I think what we should do is- Have them give us a report on the 19th and bring it up too. Is that sufficient? Let them give a report. Can I have this on there?
Okay.
Do we want the, I think the grant writer is pretty important with some time sensitive stuff, so you want to put that on agenda for next time? That's fine. Okay. And I think with that, that's probably sufficient. What were the grant writer issues that were time sensitive? I thought we heard earlier that they were not time sensitive anyway.
Well, there are others besides the stormwater.
Okay, that was brought to me soon.
And, and did councilmember Vilma want the town hall meeting assignments?
Yes.
Also.
Okay. Yeah. Any further? There should be enough, I think a full one, full one. Let me bring up one thing right now for future council meetings. Looking at the January 2nd meeting, do we want to move that to the 9th of January? Because of workload, the staff being out for the holidays.
And so meet on the 9th and 23rd?
9th and 23rd, if that's-
The 1st and 3rd. Sorry for the name.
That's sufficient?
Sorry for the name.
Is that okay? Okay. Thank you, please make note of that. And if we can get them out to everybody that there is a change there. Appreciate it. Okay. Agenda item 15, and would you want to stay or you?
I can, I can leave at 11:30.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I would like for her to stay because one of the issues that needs to be talked about here is her contract and I think she should be present for that unless you choose to, to go, but you want to talk about your contract?
Fine.
Okay. All right.
Mary Katina, can I respectfully request a break first before we start this process?
Okay. Yeah, we've been going at it. Take five minutes. Break. Okay. Resets the meeting in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
15.
Yeah, I agree. I will bring back, we're ready. On agenda item number 15, interviews for permanent city manager when we'd like to do it. Also, the procedure we want to use, I asked Jim to find out some answers to questions that were brought up at the last meeting concerning what questions we were, were not allowed to ask, where we had to ask the same questions to everybody. So, Jim, do you want to?
Mr. Mayor, before he speaks, I really would like to address this board. I have some real serious concerns.
Okay, do we want to do, is that pertaining to?
It's regarding to the city manager selection process.
Okay.
First of all, we know now that the 180-day deadline matter is not, is not an issue. So, we have as much time as we need to do this thing right. I, I received a couple of phone calls this past week from people who have been watching what's going on and the feedback, feedback that I received, I'm trying to put this delicately, indicates that we maybe don't have the best group of candidates to be choosing from in the best interest of this city. And these were folks with personal knowledge. They spoke of one of the candidates in particular. I will not identify the candidate and I will not identify what was said. But this troubles me greatly. It has troubled me for some time and I want to make it very clear that I believe that the citizen selection committee that, that made the recommendations to us, put forth a good faith effort to do the very best that they could. I truly believe they did an excellent job, given what they were given to work with. However, they were not given enough time to do the kinds of things that needed to be done to really get a picture of the candidates that we are planning to interview. And the city of Melbourne just went through this process and I don't know if any of you bothered to look at their website. They hired a professional executive search firm.
Look that up, yeah.
Okay. And in their, I looked at their report and they, what they did for Melbourne was they narrowed down the search, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, they had over 100 applicants. They winnowed those down to, I believe it was the final 12, of whom they recommended five for interviews. And the report on those 12 finalists was almost 1,000 pages long. You knew going into this almost everything about them except the color of the pajamas they wear. It was an unbelievable amount of work. It told you, you came away with a, with a sense of what the person's temperament was, what his peers, his or her peers think of him or her, strengths, weaknesses. It was such a thorough thing and then finally, they came up with a list of finalists that they felt really suited the city of Melbourne. And I am really, really leery of proceeding with the way we're going. We will never make another decision in this council as important for our residents as the person we hire as the city manager. And I don't think this is the time or place to cut corners. And I really am asking this council to stop this process now and go out for bids, looking for an executive search firm, make a selection and then proceed from there and get the kind of information on the people that finally do come to us, knowing that when these names come to us, they have been so thoroughly vetted that we can feel confident that, that any of them would be a good match for Satellite Beach. And I just don't have that feeling about some of the ones that we're looking at now. And, you know, among the five, there's one that I would pick, but I, I would really like to think that, that that person would apply again and maybe if that person's name came to the top again, I would feel so much better about knowing that that person was picked because he or she was the, the best of a really good crop, rather than the best of a more mediocre group. And that's my proposal to the council.
I have to agree with Ms. Gott. I haven't gotten phone calls, but I have gotten emails and, and three in particular actually, actually turned out to be problematic in my mind. And I, I agree that the, the ad hoc committee or whatever it was that we put together, we, A, we were working on what we thought was a, was a restricted timeline. Turns out it wasn't. I'm glad it's not. But I, I agree. The decision that we make is going to be with us for a long, long time. And now that that's not a lim fact any longer, and I believe the interim city manager has agreed to, to stay on until we can find somebody, or at least we're going to talk about that?
We have not yet discussed that.
Okay. If that were the case, then I, I would like to do that too. I think we should go about this in a much more, with a much more professional team, not to disparage at all the, the ad hoc committee because you guys worked your tails off with what we thought was a very close timeframe. Mark? What's the, what's the approximate cost of that, Lauren, do you know?
I don't know. We, frankly, somebody floated a sum of $20,000, but I don't know if that's accurate or not and, you know, when we go out for bids, then that's when we find out.
That's pretty accurate, I think. It's a reasonable ballpark, you're right on that.
15 to 20. Concerning the budget, let me just throw it up till we have the funds to run it. I mean, obviously this is-
We need to find them from someplace in the-
I understand. I'm just saying, this is a very important decision we're going to make and process through this. So, where, where would we find it?
I'm not here to address that, can I? Who are you talking to?
I'm talking to the city manager.
Oh, all right.
And it is because, yes, I agree with you. I want to make sure we got all our ducks in a row when we go out and do this so the process can continue. It's okay.
Well, what I'm going to have to do is I'm going to have to sit down with Brenda and see, see what we can do.
And that's the process.
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, I think the decision we need to make here tonight is that we will go this route.
Go through that process. Okay. All right. Okay, let me open it up for, for some comments.
Dom Clenden, resident. As you know, I was a vice chair of that committee. Committee was formed quite rapidly. It's first, I addressed council with some concerns that I had from the get-go, that time was too short, the committee had been formed too late. Our first meeting was, I don't know why, to this day, was delayed for over three weeks. We, I would have liked to see more workshopping, but the number one thing, as one of the committee members, I would have really liked to see council workshop and had provided us as a committee a very well detailed and defined perspective, our job applicant qualifications that we could have worked better with. As far as hiring a outside headhunting firm, I certainly have no problem with that. There was one council member that advocated that. Her, that council member's decision was not moved forward in light of financial concerns at the time, but I agree with Councilwoman Gott that this is a decision that may, it will impact the city. It could be for a long time, it could be for three months. I'll tell you what, I did find out during this search, is especially looking through the ICMA, this is a group of professionals, it's a professional organization, they, they move around a lot. It's, it's not unexpected that you'll get a lot of the same names that came up in the resume, you won't get them from a headhunter firm without doubt because my research shows that large cities and small who hired headhunting firms, some of their shortlists contain the same, same people that were on our shortlist. I don't take your decision in any way and I'm sure I speak for other members of the committee, if I don't, there's more, there's one there here who can chime in. We take no, or I take no disrespect in the position you're taking. I think it's appropriate and let's find the money and take the time and do it right and hope that when we do get that person, it's not going to be one of these people that's going hard bought and negotiated severance contract. One issue that came up in the committee members is that's the only protection these people have, is a severance. And some of these people want six months severance after six months' work. I mean, it's lucrative and some of them can move this around every three years. It could change with an election cycle as we, I'm sorry, as we know, it could change with an election cycle, then we don't have a, a severance package we're going to pay out. I recall one instance where a new council was elected and they said if the old council appointed that city manager, the day it's elected, they're going to immediately fire that person and pay the $45,000 severance package if the person did not work today. So, I mean, this is kind of stuff you learn, stuff I learned. I learned a lot about the job and the position and I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city in some, some way. We did the best we could with what we had.
No doubt about that.
Fred Vayner, as you know, I served on the committee also and I appreciate your comment because I, I felt like we were very rushed. And- And, uh, we did the best we could with the time constraints we had and the guidance we had. And there's, uh, and I consider this position as a very, is the key position in the Kenton City. So if you hire the wrong person, and I've got lots of experience in hiring the wrong people, I, I've hired lots of wrong people. Uh, and you, and you find out, uh, if you would have known a little bit more information about them, uh, you probably wouldn't have made the same decision. And headhunters have capabilities of finding a lot of stuff out that we just frankly did not have the capabilities to do. So I think you're on the right path, and it's a good, good path.
Dave Fine, citizen. I, I attended a meeting of, uh, the folks that were given the assignment of picking our five finalists, et cetera, and they did tremendous professional job, as far as I'm concerned. Um, they shared their matrix with me, how they set it up, et cetera. And, uh, you know, a lot of applause to them. Um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, Ms. Gott's on the right track that, that we need to hire the most professional and the best we can. You know, I just think, you're sitting here since the people that applied in Melbourne were so deeply vetted, you know, that we knew what kind of underwear they were wearing, okay? Um, maybe we should take the number two to number six people and have them apply.
And actually, we had discussed that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. When, when we were talking about putting together the meet, the committee, we talked about ghosting what other professional folks were doing and using their inputs.
Yeah.
We had actually discussed that.
Um, I was not aware that you did, but it's just sitting there, distorted into my mind. And, um, I never got to address the dress code. I wore a sweater because my wife said she was cold. Okay? And, uh, when my wife said she was cold, and she said I had to wear a sweater, uh, yeah, that's how I lasted forty-nine years. Okay? But anyway, I just, I just want to leave a good note, good night, folks.
Thank you. Any other-
Can I just say, one of the many quickly, but I'll have to walk up there and type-
Yes, I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's interesting. Any further comments?
Here in number back to council. Port Orange and Melbourne's list, if you, if you look at them. And, uh, I did read the Melbourne's ones, because that's where I got the hundred and seven, and it was a, it was, it was pretty interesting.
A little bit.
Yeah, it was. So, direction we go? Um, timing? After, after Christmas, before, get out an RFP?
Yeah, I, I would think that, you know, starting in January, we can get out an RFP on this, to, um, look for a search firm, and, um, get the, get proposals, and then pick one, and then proceed as expeditiously as possible. Uh, but we're not under a, a deadline, you know, a precise deadline by which something has to be done.
Maybe a smart way to go is make the R, part of the RFP, then give us a timeline?
Yeah.
A postponed timeline.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
I'd like to, I think everybody would like to get it done within reason, full amount of time, or do a thorough job. And I think that's critical to do.
So, and now? Yeah. I was going to say, you mentioned something about the contract, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, um, the interim city manager's contract is up in another, uh, it's up by December the sixteenth, and-
That her contract is not on the agenda. It's not mentioned, it's not anywhere. You don't have a choose to bring it up.
Um, we are under the permanent city manager. This is all part of this that we have to do.
Agenda item is-
Sorry, excuse me.
Um, and so we need to deal with, um, obviously, we're not going to have a city manager in place, um, as soon as we thought we would, a permanent city manager. Um, her contract is up in, um, eleven days, and, um, it's, um, uh, a normal, uh, practice to, um, when the top management, um, has not been selected for, um, continuing in a position, it's a common practice to, um, cut the ties promptly. Um, and so, um, I would, uh, be interested in, um, uh, looking at, uh, appointing an acting city manager to take us through this interim period, because we don't know how long it's going to be. Um, and if we have an acting, uh, chosen from our staff, uh, they're on board, and they can be on board at no extra cost to the city. Um, and, uh, with that, I would, uh, move that effective immediately, the interim city manager be placed on paid leave through the end of her contract, December sixteenth.
Now, before, before I, can I make a second of this? Who, who have you got in mind specifically? Who would-
I would like to, uh, you mean for the acting?
Yeah.
Um, I would like to propose Chief Pearson, if he is willing to take the position. Um, he knows the staff well, uh, he knows the issues. Um, there are also some ongoing, um, personnel issues at, here in City Hall that need to be addressed, and I think that, uh, he has the skills to be able to handle those, and, uh, he, I think that he can keep us going on an indefinite period until we can get a permanent city manager on board.
I'll just point out that, that, uh, we're already saying that people are overworked. Why would we want to do that? And if we're going to mitigate or minimize the adverse impact, uh, of change in this city, why don't we just keep the interim city manager that we had, who seems to be doing very well? And by all intents and purposes, from what I hear from the department heads, um, being very successful. Uh, if we, if we truly want to, to, you know, to minimize perturbations to the workforce, let's not, uh, let's not make any major changes.
Before we- What I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is hear, hear from that gentleman over there about this, and, and what his thoughts are, and I'd like to hear from the city attorney, too, to make sure.
Before you go down the path of discussing with the police chief, um, Florida has what's called a dual office holding prohibition, and I don't know what council's intentions are or were, um, but, and I believe it would, even if you were talking about the fire chief, uh, because I think he'd fall within the same topic, is that, um, if the council were to appoint either one of them, that, that would create a vac- vacancy in their position. They cannot hold both positions at the same time. And then there would have to be an acting police, or using Don, an acting fire chief. Um, and essentially, there would have to be some sort of an agreement between the council and the staff person to allow that staff person to go back into their prior position.
I'm sure whomever the person might be, um, he would very much, or should very much want that particular piece of paper under sign to protect their job. Um, you know, it's pretty major to leave one position, and you want the security to be able to go back. I mean, I think it's critical, and how is that accomplished? I mean, we got to have our ducks in a row there.
That's what, again, I think the minimal, the minimum impact way to go, and, you know, let's not mess with the success that we, that we currently have. Again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from Mr. Pearson. Yes. Definitely. I was just, is that mic on?
First of all, the question would be, would you be willing to accept, uh, an acting city manager's position for, for, um, actually, at this point, an indefinite period of time until we can, uh, find a permanent city manager?
My position has always been that I will do whatever the city, the city council wants me to do, or thinks will be the benefit of the city. If you all think that that change is what's best, and that's what you think is the best for the city, then, and you're, and you're asking me to, to do that because you think that's best, then, then, yeah, I'll do what I can to be whatever help. I would like very strongly, before anything happens, to do what he said, because I will have no problem helping out if that's what you all deem is the best for the city, but I want it written that says, whatever happens, and however, whatever, I go back to my job. That's, that's all I, as far as the acting-
And this, chief, that's- Let me ask this, that we just said before, we're, we're in no hurry. The gentleman probably, chief, how long does he really want to be out of his job, running? Police, I know we have fabulous guys in his department, but I'm just bringing this up from the standpoint, I think you do need a timetable in appointing a new city manager, just so the system works. If not, he could be a city manager for six months. Not saying it's going to last that long, but does he want, uh, that's what I'm saying, does he want that? I mean, I don't want to, you know, be negative here, but I want to make sure that, you know, what's the timetable?
Well, then ask him, six months of the timeframe.
Ask, do we want to take-
I thought we were going to, yeah, I thought we were going to discuss the timeframe when we talked about the RFP. I, 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 why mess with success? Why mess with what we got going? What's, 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 what's been the problem with the interim city manager that we would need to make such a big change, um, over the period of time between now and when we pick our final city manager? What is real? Let's see, there's-
There's some issues going on, um, at City Hall that I believe are not being addressed, um, and that desperately need to be addressed. In addition, um, the interim city manager's contract, uh, concludes on December the sixteenth. And, um, by having a staff member fill in as acting, that's eight thousand dollars a month that we can be saving while we work through what we need to work through in order to hire a permanent city manager. And if you want to look at, um, uh, you know, where would the money come for the search firm, there's savings right there.
Got another question, chief. Who is, who's your backup on this? I mean, if, if this is done, what, who's, who's the backup person for you and your department?
Those procedures are in place, the man sitting there in here.
Okay.
If I wear the lottery and call from Tahiti and say, oh, I, I'm not coming back, the place doesn't stop.
Okay.
The procedures are in place to handle, that, that's, that's the reason why. The police department is running in the hand of Commander Hodges, so he's going to fight immediate boss. I'm not voting, all right? I was, but, uh, whatever.
What, what would, and just, just as a clarification, what, what would you see your role be? What, what expectations would you have for this role?
I, I would suspect the expectations would be different.
Okay.
The way I'm hearing it, is just pull down the fort until a permanent city manager is hired, from what I understand. But I don't, I don't know how many-
But I guess, and I, you're right, and here's what I'm asking, I guess. You would, I, I would see, if this, this moves forward, that you would be the person in control to make decisions for the city throughout a given day. Is that, is that your perception, too? I mean, I, I have to, we, there has to be an exchange of what, what the role would be, from your understanding.
I heard a comment that, you know, there's issues that, that need to be addressed, so I think what are the expectations are different. If you need, if the city council, Satellite Beach is asking me, I've been here twenty-five years, I've never turned down the city before, I've never said no, I've never not stepped up on the ass to do something, and I'm not going to start again. So, assuming the expectations aren't above my, what I would consider my skill set ability, then I would expect that wherever you, city manager, works for the city council, where your expectations are, is what I would do, just like they are now. Your expectations with the police chief are this, and that's what I do.
I'm going to go ahead and ask this, just because I think we should. Um, you know, we're, obviously, there'd be some savings on this, but I want, would, would your current level of compensation be appropriate, or would you expect to have a higher level of compensation as a result of taking on this position?
I'm not going to ask.
No, I just want to throw it out there. Okay.
Normally-
You all decide what you think is appropriate.
Okay.
And normally, acting, uh, positions don't get an increase in salary.
Correct. But I just want to have it on the table, is, is being thrown out there, or, and that's all. Me open it up to the floor? Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll second, second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilman Breimer. I'll open it up to the floor.
Don McLeven, Satellite Beach. Five minutes after midnight, and we get popped with a surprise. Um, needless to say, um, there's some dynamics going on here that, uh, we weren't aware of. City attorney wasn't even given the opportunity to address the agenda item on what his findings were. We were just told by another attorney that, uh, it's not a problem anymore. She flat out, excuse me, flat cut out the city attorney out of the conversation. I feel like I would have heard his comments. So, uh, you know, based on, um, based on what I just heard, and, and believe me, I have no doubt whatsoever that, uh, Chief Pearson is sincere, and he has a good backup, uh, uh, and will do what the, uh, council would, uh, like him to do. And, uh, this is, in no means, uh, disparaging to him, uh, because he's, in my mind, uh, there's something going on here that, that, that we're not aware of, and if there is, it's called an issue, or issues. Well, council's job, if there's some issues, is direct the city manager to correct them. And she's, I don't know whether she wants to stay on or not, I, I, you know, I have no clue. But this is, this is, this is nevertheless a big surprise, and I'll take back some of my kind, kind comments that Councilwoman Gott.
Thank you. Any other comment from citizens?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, there's no disrespect for anybody in this room, but I, I believe that Anne's done a phenomenal job as interim city manager, and I have just been impressed watching her in action, and, uh, I would put my vote in to keep her on, if you can. No disrespect to the chief, because I know he's a phenomenal person, too. But, uh, you have, you have some time now, you have somebody that understands the job, uh, she's up against all the issues, uh, why not, why not keep her on board, if she wants to be? She may not want to, I mean, I don't know. But, uh, just my recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other count, comments?
Dale Abrams, resident. Boy, this is an element of surprise. Um, this guy's a great guy, but the reaction I saw here tonight looks like you just threw him a curveball. And for him to sit here, and you guys talk about money, and, you know, his responsibilities, it looked like, I don't think you've had a discussion with him about this at all. Surprise! You know, it just, this doesn't sit well here. And thank God for you two, because I will be watching this at least four times to understand it a little bit more.
And the other public comment, here in number back to council. Um, I think this whole approach stinks, and I think it speaks to skullbuggery and, and just, just the, the worst basis for governing. Um, to pop this sort of an issue, uh, at, at midnight in a council meeting is unforgivable. We have a successful interim city manager, there are no issues that I've been made aware of. I would like to know what the personnel issues are, if they're, if they're of some sort-
I would like to know what the personnel issues are, if they're, if they're of some sort of, you know, crisis situation, then I would have hoped that I, we would have heard about it by now. But it seems to me, it's a personal, it, it, it is my opinion that, that there's some sort of a vendetta or something going on that I don't quite comprehend, and, and I don't like it one bit.
May I, may I say something? Since I, you know, this was popped on me tonight, never having discussed any issues that there were any, you know, council members have an issue with me, the proper procedure is to come to me and speak with me. Never have I heard a word. And I'm absolutely appalled. I have never, never been treated like I have been treated in Satellite Beach. I'm appalled. From another council person to this, I'm, I'm just amazed. And, you know, I've been involved in, in community and grassroots for many years and have the respect of a lot of people for the time and energy that I put in, and my concern for people's ability and my desire for them to get up and express themselves, because that's what makes government work. Not people who sit on the dais and people look up our noses because we're higher than they are. It's an issue of good government, proper respect for individuals, and proper procedures that are for everyone to follow, not to dictate to others, but for all of us to follow. And I have never been disrespectful to anyone. I have been calm and professional the entire time. Perfect, no. If you have questions or concerns, and I need to improve on something, or there is an issue, then you bring it to me. I'm a, I'm professional and a responsible adult. But to be treated in this manner? I wouldn't treat anyone like that, ever. I'm ashamed.
I think that's very well said. I think that's very well said, and I think we should all take that to heart.
Well, that's why I asked Ms. Samuelson to stay, because I wanted her to have her stay. But I'm, I'm going to repeat what I said, and, and then you know, you've heard my position. And I'm not going to go into details. There are some issues going on, personnel issues going on here in City Hall that need addressing. They're not being addressed. In addition, Ms. Samuelson understood that her contract ended on December the 16th. She had no expectation for a continued employment. In fact, she learned last week that she was not selected to be one of the finalists to be interviewed, so that, that was conclusive evidence that her contract would be terminated as expected. Not terminated, ended, concluded. And, you know, since, since that time, I know that interactions I've had with Ms. Samuelson, I requested that, made a simple request for a document. I got it about 24 hours later and had to make a second request, so I have discerned a foot dragging that's, I guess, trying to punish me or some of us or whatever. Anyway, we can save $8,000 a month by having an acting city manager from the staff. We do not know how long specifically that that needs to go on, so this avoids the issue of how long do we extend her contract, and so forth and so on. And I think that, that if we bring this in-house, get this stuff settled, get the issues that are ongoing resolved here at City Hall, and then get on with a, the hiring of a new city manager, permanent city manager, then, you know, we're, we're well on our way to getting our city back on track.
I think trying to make this an economic argument is a farce. Ms. Gott, if you had issues with Ms. Samuelson, you should have approached her with those issues prior to bringing it in the council in a public forum. We have talked already about the fact that we, that, that we do not, in fact, in your procedures in here, you said that, that council is not to talk directly to, you know, if, if there's an issue with an employee, that we're supposed to talk with the city manager. If you have an issue with the city manager, you should talk with her, not bring that up in a public forum. I think that is unprofessional. I'm sorry.
You're entitled to your opinion, but as I said when I started this, it is a normal custom when you have top management and their contract is coming to an end, and it is not going to be renewed. It is customary, it is at least usual, common practice for that individual to, to be, to leave immediately. And that's what I'm suggesting, and I think we need to get on with it, and, and, you know, don't second guess what my motives are. The $8,000 a month is a very big issue. And we can save that and get the job done that we need to get done.
And I don't have a problem with completing a contract, but it's, but it's all how things are done and how people are treated, because relationships are essential. And I've built many relationships throughout the county and even the state, and that's because of mutual respect and courtesy, and the proper way to treat people and to deal with issues in a proper procedure. And that's the issue here tonight.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Any further discussion on... Just, just one thing, I, I, I'm going to try to frame this another way. Lorraine, what I see you doing is you're basically saying that next week you wouldn't renew the contract. That's really what this is about.
That's correct.
More than anything else, if the contract would not be renewed.
That's correct.
Okay. And secondly, you're, part of your motion also included that we reimburse her for the full period of her contract, is that correct?
I agree with you, through the end of her contract.
Okay. And my point remains, why, why, why cause perturbations to a procedure and process that is, that is well established for the last six months, and we should keep it in place until we get, we don't know how long it's going to be till we get our new city manager. So, why, again, why screw up something that we thought going well? And, and I'm sorry, but it does come across, it does come across a little, a little, it makes a hair on the back of my neck, it really reeks, in my estimation. That's all I have to say. Any further? I got another question. Does this, does this appoint, if we, if we did this or don't do this, whichever it happens, does this, does this motion include Jeff Pearson as being...
Right now, I would make another motion instead of, you know, jumbling everything up. Right now, the motion is to place the interim city manager on paid leave through the completion of her contract, which is December 16th. Then I would make another motion, you know, if, regarding an acting city manager.
Okay. I would like everybody here tonight to review this on YouTube and have all of your friends to review this on YouTube, and come speak their mind at the next meeting. Any further? No. Here and now, Lenore?
Councilmember Billman?
What's that?
Councilmember Billman?
No.
Councilmember Brymer?
Yes.
Councilmember Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattina?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, then, my next motion would be that we appoint Jeff, Police Chief Jeff Pearson as the acting, acting city manager for an indeterminate time at, at this point, and that he follow normal, normal transition procedures with the interim city manager beginning this evening, and that he have full city manager authority, including the authority to hire and fire.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Brymer, discussion. Open up for public comment.
Talked a lot, Don McLean and citizen. Talked a lot tonight about K-Peg and efficiency studies and whatnot, what was needed, what are we doing right? And we heard over and over from council that, you know, the city seems, you know, looks good, you know, that we've got to make some changes. Our new council, you've got your agenda, what you want to do, you were elected to do it. You know, part of that efficiency thing, so, no disrespect to Chief Pearson again, or, or the whole police department, but does this mean that, that the chief's job is redundant over there? I mean, so, you can come over here and work, and we can lose the highest position in PD, of course, the commander will step up. It's the, tonight, I was wondering why I was here now, now. So, I mean, this is, you know, very well pre-planned, thought out, not unexpected now. I, I, you know, been, we're talking about knitting a community together again, and this kind of stuff is just, it's just beyond hell. I mean, Ms. Samuelson, to me, it's disgusting. I ask you, Mr. Mayor, specifically, as a citizen comment, why item 15 was put at the very end of this meeting? You said because tradition with Anne Samuelson, get here, she will be asked to step out, she'll be allowed, yes.
And Anne, Anne, I asked Anne, Anne put the item, I'll, I'll address your thing on 15. Anne put the item on the last item for agenda tonight. I asked Anne, tonight, did you put it there because you would want to leave after the agenda items for next council meeting? She was, she said yes to me. She was going to leave, Councilwoman Gott asked her to stay.
Okay, well, that was not the answer I got when I asked...
It was put there by her, she requested that that be put on the last item, as we did the last council meeting when we picked those. We made the short one. She asked, please, do you mind if I, excuse? She put it there again, for this agenda packet, and I asked her, is the reason it's there, you would like to be?
That's up to your explanation.
So that's where, you're getting from.
I still think, you know, it's, it's, to me, appalling, and I'm disappointed. You know, I speak my mind, I'm, I'm not opposed to everything that one council or another comes up with, I, I speak my opinion. And sometimes it's taken, sometimes it's, citizens laugh it up, but still, I'm willing to participate in honest dialogue.
Thank you.
I know you've ruled on this, but I'd like it in the minutes. This, this issue is outside of the agenda item. The agenda item was on the interviews for the city manager. Mentions nothing about extending or discontinuing the contract for Anne Samuelson or anyone. You guys, there's no notice to the public, there's no nothing. In my opinion, it's way outside the agenda, and it should not have ever been allowed. And I hope it's, just want to make sure it's on the record.
Thank you. Any further comment? Right.
This is the darkest day I've seen in Satellite Beach since I've lived here for 25 years. I've never, ever seen a sham like this, never.
It's nerve-wracking for me to be up here. I'm not very comfortable to do it. I'm sorry, Joanne Regan, citizen. It's, I'm nervous, but I don't think that anyone on this platform takes that action easily. And I understand how people in the audience feel very upset about it. It's similar to the way, the last time I spoke here, when our city manager that had led our city through a lot of great successes and through a lot of troubled waters, it's similar to how I felt, so I can understand how they feel. They feel like it's a dark day. But I have confidence that it's not a dark day, that it's a termination of a contract that was almost up, and that you will use this time to find the best leader that you can. A lot of things have happened very rapidly, as many things happened very rapidly when Councilmember Billman came into office. And I remember back then, somebody said, slow down. I think, in the interest of everybody feeling comfortable, maybe a little bit of slowing down is a good idea. That's not to say I don't have confidence that you'll act wisely. But I have sympathy for the people that felt the way I did when the newest members came on council. I felt like it wasn't my city anymore, and I don't want other people to feel that way. I have confidence that you'll do the right thing, but I want everybody to feel that way.
Thank you. Any other public comment before closing? Here and now, closer.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make it clear that I spoke with Jeff Pearson, because I, I knew that I was going to make this motion, and I needed to talk to him ahead of time to see if he would be willing to take on the job. And I asked him to be here, and I guess he asked Brad Hodge to be here. So, there's the big mystery about why he showed up here. And I think it was absolutely appropriate, if I was going to make this recommendation to the council, that he be given prior notice that I, that I wanted to do that. And if he had indicated to me that he was not willing to do it, then I wasn't going to mention him here. But he gave me the same answer that he gave here tonight. You know, if the city calls upon him, he will be there to serve. And, and I, I will continue to take issue with the notion that this is a big surprise. The interim city manager's contract expires in 11 days. There was nothing in that contract that would give anyone the expectation that that, that contract would continue. And I felt that, at this point in time, Jeff Pearson has the skills that we need to move us forward, he has the respect of the staff, they know him, they've worked with him for years, and if anybody has the best interests of this city at heart, it's Jeff Pearson. He is a product of Satellite Beach. His entire personal history and professional history are tied up right here in Satellite Beach. And I think that he will work very hard to serve the city and to carry us forward until we can hire a permanent city manager who will be chosen among, from, among the best candidates that we can get.
Okay, so, Ms. Gott, by your very admission just now, you, you violated two C of your rewrite. All interactions between council members and city personnel regarding city government shall occur through the city manager. You went directly to the chief, and you coordinated this before it came in. This is the most coordinated attack I have seen since the last one I flew in Desert Storm, and this is BS. You went to, you went to a employee of this city without going through the city manager. And ma'am, that, that violates the very, the very line that you wrote.
I did not violate the city charter, and I needed to sound out Mr. Pearson to see if he would be interested before I came in here.
Was that an interaction between a council member and city personnel?
Not as the city police chief.
It depends what the word is, is. This is ridiculous. We have a motion...
Sort of like after Councilman Higgins died, isn't it?
This, ah, political payback. Okay, okay.
What I find amazing is your reaction to this.
It's perfect, just perfect. That was a very telling...
No, it wasn't.
We have a motion on the, there's no further discussion on this topic. Now, we need to vote. Okay? Here we go. Lenore?
Councilmember Billman?
No. And it's not because I don't, I don't think that the chief could do it, but it's no, just because of the entire, the, the entire genre of this discussion, it's just BS.
Can I respectfully...
Just no.
Can I respectfully request that Attorney Beadle speak? Just for, for clarity for the city and for council and... Am I allowed to at least do that? I, I just, if not, I'll continue with the motion.
I think we continue with the motion. I'll let Jim speak then.
I'm sorry?
Continue motion.
Um, Councilmember Brymer?
Yes.
Councilmember Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattina?
Yes. Motion carries. Here and now, any further...
Hearing, any further business? Unbelievable. Hearing none, members adjourn.